Welcome to this special meeting. July 17, 2023. We'll start by moving our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board in the entrance hall of the Beach Haven Municipal Building and mailing the same to the Beach Haven Times and the Asbury Park Press. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision for each individual application. Decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Roll call. Mrs. Edels? Mrs. Leonard? Mr. Balbo? Mr. Tinquist? Mr. Stevens? Mr. Jenna? Mayor Davis? Mr. Mettle? Mrs. Ballmiller? Here. Mr. LaFredo? He's on mute. Okay. Mr. Wanger? Ms. King? Mr. Hale Perrin?
All right, I just want to read some instructions for tonight. Before we begin this meeting tonight, I want everybody to understand that this is a judicial proceeding. It's like being in a courtroom. And if you were sitting in a courtroom, you would never think of calling out, clapping, talking, yelling, et cetera. And I expect the very same behavior of everybody in this room tonight. If you don't comply with these instructions, then I will have you removed. Tonight, when the floor is open to public comment, please come forward and give your name, address, so you can be sworn in. After that, please keep your comments to three minutes. We will begin with the people in the room first, and then we will go to Zoom. Okay, moving right along. New business tonight. We have the Borough Beach Haven Land Use Board conducted a preliminary pursuant to whatever. I'm not going to read you all those numbers. The local redevelopment and housing law to determine a need for redevelopment and revitalization of Block 205 Lots 1 and 2. Public meeting to determine if the study meets the criteria for condemnation redevelopment area. A resolution will presented by Emily Gibbons. Okay. John?
My name is Jim Mailey. I'm redevelopment council for the borough. And my role is simply to give you a brief overview of the redevelopment process. I know some of the board members are familiar with it. Some of them might not be as familiar with it. I'm going to try to do it pretty quickly. The redevelopment, so this process starts with the governing body. The governing body has asked this board to conduct an investigation as to whether or not certain properties in the borough satisfy certain criteria under state law. And if they do satisfy those criteria, then you would make your recommendation back to the governing body to designate them as a redevelopment area. The governing body does that designation as a redevelopment area. This area is, the governing body has made the decision that they want it considered as a condemnation redevelopment area. That condemnation or non-condemnation does not in any way change your review. Your review is over statutory criteria and whether or not the property meets that statutory criteria. It's up to the governing body to decide if condemnation powers are to go with that designation or whether they are not. Just like it is also their decision, just because there is the authority to exercise eminent domain, it does not mean that it gets exercised. It just gives the authority to the borough. The governing body would decide whether or not, or if it would ever be used with respect to these lots. So this process is one, Mr. Little's prepared to report. I think everybody has a copy of the report. He's going to run through that report. The designation under state law, there's a number of different criteria. You need to satisfy one of those areas. There needs to be substantial evidence that it satisfies that area. You'll hear from your planner. There then will be an opportunity for public presentation of any materials relevant to that satisfying those criteria. And then you can vote and make a recommendation as to what your desire is. Okay, that's in a nutshell what the process is. Okay, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Right?
This mic on? Yep. All right, so our office, based on what the governing body directed, was required to do a short study to determine if the Block 205 Lots 1 and 2, 1200 North Bay Ave, was an area in need of redevelopment. There's a number of criteria under 48:12A5. As Mr. Mailey indicated, we have to satisfy one of those in order to determine that it's an area in need of redevelopment. When we reviewed it, there were environmental considerations regarding remedial action that's currently being taken place at the site. The site was in the process of being cleaned up. Nothing's really moved forward in terms of physical cleanup from what we could determine. So based on that, the site's environmentally constrained and in need of remediation, which if not remediated, will be detrimental to safety, health, morals, and welfare of the community. Therefore, the study area satisfies criterion D. I'm going to read you the criterion. It's areas with buildings or improvements which by reason of dilapidation, obsolescence, overcrowding, faulty arrangement or design, lack of ventilation, light sanitary facilities, excessive land coverage, notorious land use or obsolete layout or a combination of these other factors are determined to be detrimental to the safety, health, morals, and welfare of the community. And based on our review of that criteria with the site under remediation, it was our opinion it met criteria D. The other criteria which we believe it meets was the discontinuance of use. We looked at site topography, the study area, and determined that roughly since July of 17, the properties remain unoccupied and unutilized for nearly the past six years. There's been no code violations, but the buildings remain unoccupied. And so based on discontinuance of use, the statute on that is the discontinuance of use of a building or buildings previously used for commercial, retail, shopping malls or plazas, office parks, manufacturing or industrial purposes, the abandonment of such building or buildings for at least two consecutive years or the same being allowed to fall in so great a state of disrepair to be untenable. So again, based on that criteria, we felt that it met that criteria also. So it meets at least one, if not two, and as a result, can be deemed an area to be considered for redevelopment. That's what I have.
Okay. You want to discuss this now, or do you want to open to the public first?
I'm not sure how the Board wants to handle it. I assume you could open it to the public and receive any testimony in regard to any comments on it, and then the Board could close the public, discuss it, and take a vote.
Can I have a motion to open this to the public, please?
I so move, Penny.
Second?
Second.
If there's anybody in the public that would like to come up and speak to this redevelopment, please step forward, name, address. Three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Catherine Ward. I'm an attorney with Stradler, Rowan, and Stevens &amp; Young. I also do redevelopment law and environmental law. I'm here representing the property owners of the property that's the subject of tonight's hearing, part of this hearing. Clearly, this is a big deal for my clients. The ability of the borough to take their property rights away is a very big use of force by the borough. And I understand that you will have the right to do it. It doesn't mean you will do it, but you can imagine what it's like to live with that hanging over your head. So with that as a background, and I represent municipalities, Jim and I have worked together, in fact, on behalf of another municipality in this area. So we're very careful about how we go about doing this. What I have seen here is something that I haven't seen before, which is that there is a movement by the municipal authority and their professionals that is not based in fact. We have, when I became involved, we learned about it. I met with several members of council. We provided some additional information. We have more information to provide. We have supplemented the information in between times. And yet, the facts are still wrong that you're being told and that you will be relying upon. I'm really not sure how I can correct that other than to keep saying that they're wrong. What we heard Mr. Little say is that the property has, with regard to remediation, "Nothing has moved forward as far as we can determine." I believe that's an exact quote. We have presented this before in terms of verbally. We have submitted documentation. I have another document here today that, if the Board is amenable, I can submit, which lays out everything that has been happening, in fact, since about 2014. There was a delay before that in terms of the work that needed to be done. But since 2014, it's been moving forward. And we are now at the point where we have, we know exactly what needs to be done to wrap up this case. We entered into a voluntary, what's called administrative consent order, an ACO, with the state last year in April that lays out everything that needs to be done. We posted the funds that are necessary and required by the state to guarantee that we will do the work. And the work has been proceeding. It's, I mean, I've been doing this for over 30 years, and this is not anything that's what I would consider to be a big deal. It is a little bit more complicated because there is product in the soil under the building. And that leads to my next issue. When he says that the discontinuance, it satisfies the discontinuance of use criteria because it has been unoccupied since July of 2017. A lease has been in place since, when did the lease start? Okay, so five years ago. It expired January 2023. We allowed it to expire. My client allowed it to expire because in the last months of the lease, the consultant had been going in to trench the building, to get in there and try to see what was under the slab. There's actually two slabs under that building, which again, makes it a little more complicated. It became pretty clear, especially since we changed consultants in January of this year. And Woodard &amp; Curran, who is the current LSRP, went in there and saw that there was some additional work that needed to be done under the floor. So my client allowed the lease to expire so that we could get in there and dig up whatever needed to be dig up, which we're in the process of doing now. So we're well on our way. And I cannot understand, I cannot explain to my client why a municipality would want to substitute their view, maybe of what needs to be done for what is being done in complete compliance with the regulations. So if it's okay, may I submit this? Is that right? And I also have one more thing to submit, if that's all right. I just want to give you a little background. This is an email from March, when Mark from Woodard &amp; Curran got involved. And we wanted to get our handles, we wanted to get a handle on whether or not there was any possibility of the contamination that is in the groundwater. There actually is very minor. In my world, this is really not anything to be concerned about. But there is some contamination in the groundwater. And I want to emphasize that groundwater under the surface, under the ground surface is in layers, just like you have soil layers and geologic layers. So where this contamination is, is in the upper aquifer. It's a layer of water, if you will. Where the municipal drinking water wells are is 100 feet down and separated by an impermeable layer. Plus, it is almost a mile away. So there is literally no way that whatever the minor contamination is that is just within feet of our property line can go that far and that far down. So, and Mark had had a conversation and exchanged emails with the case manager at DEP. And we thought we would share that back and forth, just so you can see it. Looking forward, we do expect to have this wrapped up. Not necessarily this year, but possibly. But we have people who are very interested, have been interested, remain interested, and would want to bring a use that is very vibrant to the site. So my client's going to lose that opportunity. And again, that's not something that the borough really should step in the way of. That's really all I had to say. I appreciate, I think I went over three minutes. I apologize, but thank you. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer it. We have a number of people here who can pretty much answer anything you need.
I have a question. The last date on here is January 2020. Has anything been done since that date?
It's on the back. Trying to save paper, that's all.
Are there any reports from the DEP about how contaminated the area is?
So that's really not what DEP does. What DEP, no, you were correct. But DEP doesn't do that. They, especially since about 2009, when they started the LSRP program, the Licensed Site Remediation Program. So that allows people like Mark, who have the education and experience and have passed a very difficult test, to make decisions for a site. And they have to run the final decision by DEP. DEP basically has to bless it if there's going to be anything that is not 100% resolved. For example, at this site, it is possible that we will have this groundwater issue, but the groundwater issue will still allow the open remediation case to be closed. We might just have to monitor periodically to make sure that the contamination gradually decreases. But those decisions are made by the LSRP and in some cases have to be blessed by DEP. But in other cases, don't have to be blessed. They're held to a standard. They're actually considered, LSRP's are actually considered an arm of the state for that purpose.
How much longer are you thinking before this is completed?
So, in terms of, when you ask that question, do you mean at what point will the soil be resolved or the groundwater be resolved? Because a lot of things can go on in the background without impacting activities on the site. So for example, once we get a handle on what's going on under the building, it's very possible that we can get that out pretty quickly, as much as we are required to get out. And then that's it. Everything can move forward. There can be somebody using that property.
So you don't really know what's going on under the building?
We have some information. Is it all right if he tells you more?
Sure.
You have to be, your name, address?
Address, okay. Mark Pichuka, 294 New Jersey Avenue, Westmont, New Jersey. I'm the retained, sorry. I'm the retained licensed site remediation professional for the site.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am. So we did a rigorous investigation last week that included collection of upwards of 20 samples underneath the building, 20 borings underneath the building, and soil samples for laboratory analyses to try to get a three-dimensional understanding of how much soil underneath the building is impacted so that we can determine an appropriate remedial strategy for it. We should have that data in a couple of weeks. We've committed to providing the data to the borough's licensed site remediation professional mid-August. And we'll continue to move forward with the investigation as well as groundwater monitoring. What'll dictate the length of time for the remediation will be the results of that groundwater monitoring. We expect that to go for at least two years with samples collected on a quarterly basis.
So let me ask you a question. Whether the pences do this or the borough does this, it's still going to take two years?
Yes. Yes, there'll be, the expected remedy will include monitored natural attenuation of groundwater. And in order to demonstrate that monitored natural attenuation is effective, the DEP requires two years of quarterly groundwater monitoring data.
Mark, can you explain what natural attenuation is? Because I don't think that the Board understands what the difference between natural attenuation is, which is a more passive remediation rather than a more aggressive approach, which would be more timely in a timely manner.
A more aggressive approach, including a treatment, would still require a one-year quarterly monitoring by DEP. DEP would require that before issuing a permit. Natural attenuation is a process by which the contaminants naturally degrade over time based on bacteria-present conditions that are present beneath the site. So everything has a half-life. Everything's going to degrade over time if the source is addressed. So the idea is to address the source first and then determine what would need to be done for groundwater. Unfortunately, it takes time, whether we do a active remedy or a passive remedy.
So my question is, the pences are agreeing to do this, but they're not agreeing to do it as fast as the borough would like it done?
I don't know the specifics around that.
Right, thank you.
Kathy might be able to help with that.
So I'm not aware of any discussions that the boroughs had in terms of when they want this done or drop dead date or something like that. But I do want to emphasize that what Mark was talking about, the natural attenuation in the groundwater, doesn't affect the property. The property is going to be in use, have a brand-new use way before two years is up. Because again, we just have to get into the soil to see what's going on in the soil. The groundwater will take care of itself, and it doesn't affect anything. And this goes on all over the state. This is not unique. This is not unusual. This is pretty routine.
You're saying they could sell this property before it's all done?
From a legal standpoint, there's nothing holding them back from selling the property.
Why would anybody buy a property if they think it's contaminated?
That's what's holding them back from selling the property, yeah.
Because it is contaminated.
It has some contamination, yes. It has an active remediation case.
And you have no time date of when it will not be contaminated?
No, I think from a soil standpoint, Mark. I mean, I thought it might be this year, but maybe not.
It depends on how it's addressed. If the soil can remain in place because the concentrations allow for it, that would include a deed notice and an engineering control. At a minimum, that would take six months from the department to approve the remedial action permit for soil. So what we're looking at is a combination of those things, likely being the outcome of the remedy at the site. In addition to the discharges from the formerly used petroleum tanks, the site and the subject area are mapped historic fill. So there's fill placed in the area on properties nearby, not just this property. But the DEP has mapped the subject areas, location where fill was placed to raise topographic elevation. And in many cases, that fill that was placed is contaminated.
And how long ago was this done?
When the town was built. It's not uncommon for sure, towns. Yeah, yeah. They used it to fill in marshland and things like that, but...
They used contaminated ground?
They did.
Probably.
So it's not unique.
Likely dredged material was placed or ash from a nearby incinerator that was used.
So we have to map and document and get approval for things that we didn't cause. But again, this is, in my world, pretty routine. It's just that if you don't deal with it all the time, it's a revelation, I think, sometimes, as to what goes on. And the fact that this historic fills throughout the state.
But didn't you make a statement that there's a level that is non-pervious above our water system?
There's a, and Mark can better describe that, but there is a layer that protects that aquifer where your wells are in.
So the town is not worried about any of this contamination getting into our...
Oh, I don't know. You might be worried, because I don't know. I mean, people are worried without regard to data sometimes. So all I'm saying is that from a technical standpoint...
It can have.
No, and Mark can, this is, Mark should say that.
So in several instances, those situations where the fill was placed was in a marsh to make land. The marsh has what's called a meadow mat in it that is oftentimes a vertical barrier which prevents vertical migration of contamination downward because it's made up of silts and fine sands. So basically, the contaminated material sits on top of that and doesn't migrate through that. If the borough's wells are screened below that, the opportunity for those wells to be impacted is minimized.
Is what? I can hear the last two words.
Excuse me? Is minimized, the opportunity for those wells to be impacted is minimized. On top of the fact that they're 0.7 miles away from the site.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question. So my understanding is that the gas station was abandoned in 1994? So is that correct? I mean, so this contamination has been there since 1994? I mean, I don't understand why it wasn't mediated earlier.
So yeah, frankly, I don't know either. And my client had another consultant before then. I can't speak to why, I can't speak to that. I got involved, when I got involved last year, you know, I'm used to keeping things moving. That's what I like to do. And we had numerous discussions. But there's, now we have a game plan. We've got it documented. We've got money posted. We have an ACO in place. So we're now on a track.
I guess a couple more questions. Doesn't your clients have to have a clean bill of health on this land before it's utilized? I mean, I know you could do something with it, but I mean, doesn't the DEP, doesn't somebody come in and confirm that this is gone?
No, that's not the way it works, no.
So how do you end up, I mean, when you have the responsibility to clean this up, how do you know when it's really cleaned up?
Well, because our LSRP will tell us. And the state, if he needs, in some cases, as I mentioned, he'll need DEP to rubber stamp that. That's how we know. So, and it's really, dealing with DEP is two tracks, soil and groundwater. And Mark mentioned that it would take six to nine months, maybe, or six months to get them to approve what's called a remedial action permit, which would allow the soil case to be closed. And we'll need another one to allow the groundwater case to be closed. But DEP is just so backed up. It's not that they're making, it's not that they're making technical decisions or substituting their technical expertise for Mark. It's just administratively, they are ridiculously slow and have been since COVID. So that's why that's going to take a while. That's out of our control.
I guess another question I have. So the DEP doesn't come and say, well, this is clean. We're testing it. So they're totally relying on Mark and your company that, you know, that you honestly have remediated this, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we submit all the data.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, we prove it to them.
Okay, okay. A couple other questions. I guess, you know, I'm the mayor, so I'm, you know, we're concerned. I'm also an epidemiologist, yeah, and a pathophysiologist. But, and I'm, you know... Yeah, and a pathophysiologist, but, and, and I, you know, having read the book Tom's River and knowing a lot about, I mean, epidemiology doesn't really show cause and effect, but it does show association. And there does seem to be a lot of cancer on, on these barrier islands. And it's a concern. I mean, I think that's my concern, that, that, that I want it cleaned up for health reasons. And so in no way do we want to take over the property of somebody else. I mean, I, I don't want to do that. I just want to make sure that it's cleaned up in a timely manner.
No, that, that's fair. That's absolutely fair. Yes. And, and it hasn't been in the past. But we, we do have a game plan and I'm happy, Mark's happy to sit down and explain to your experts and you.
I mean, I need a lot of explaining because I, I know, I know that they've been working on this, but nothing really has happened to remediate. So that's where I'm somewhat confused.
Well, again, before I got involved, my understanding was that there was a lot of digging. And there was a lot of hauling away, but there was no, I, I will tell you, there was no site-wide understanding. There was no effort to delineate all the issues. So when Mark came on, that was one of the things that needed to be done. And the, you know, there's different ways of addressing contamination depending on how much is there, what type of soil, where it's located, I mean, all those factors. And there was a lot of digging. But digging isn't necessarily, you know, that, that doesn't cover everything. It's not an answer to everything. So it was, and I, and I, I don't know, I can't really speak to what the game plan was then. But I just can tell you that now it is in accordance with the regulations. And we'll stay that way.
I'll add to that, that there has been probably on the order of seventy-five tons of soil removed from the site. Six underground storage tanks, which were in place at the site, have been pumped out, cleaned out. Several rounds of groundwater monitoring have been conducted. Were required to report costs to the state on an annual basis. It's my understanding that costs have been under twenty, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Solting DEP needs and the like, and then into that, you know, legal. I think the number approaches about three hundred and fifty dollars. The record that we submitted is two pages of bullets that identify these types of things along with the timeframe for these things happen, so.
So I, I, I mean, I, you know, I've heard a lot about this. I, you're the first professional I talked to, so I'm, I, I, one of the things I heard is that somebody said that they had to remove the building to really get the soil out. Is that true or can you do?
Is that a possible outcome? It could be. But the sampling that we did last week will hopefully help us identify what extent needs to be addressed by remediation. If it's a small amount, it's possible to save. If it's a larger amount, it may be more from a cost-benefit analysis appropriate to take the building down. But, you know, the data is what drives the, the, the process. Unfortunately, it's a bit of an iterative process and you kind of need to collect data, evaluate that data, potentially collect more data. But, you know, last week's work is a, was a step, I believe, in the right direction to help us make some decisions.
So, Mark, have you been working on this for a while or are you relatively new on this project?
I started working on the project at the end of January. And we did our first groundwater sampling in May. We did some aquifer testing in June. And then last week was our first, let's say, robust soil investigation.
Okay, another question. You, you do not have to remove the, the, the tanks. You said they'd been washed and cleaned.
They can be left in place. The DEP allows tanks to be abandoned in place. And then they're filled with like global fill, concrete, something like that. So once everything's cleaned out, the source is gone, but the tanks can stay in place.
Okay, and, and the other thing that I, I heard is that that the soil that's contaminated, that the contamination is moving south. Is that true?
Contamination, if it's going to move, it's going to move in groundwater. It's not going to move in soil.
Okay.
The contam, the water contamination, there are three wells across the Boulevard that have no petroleum-related contaminants in them. There's one well across Twelve Street that has gasoline, adder, tertiary, beautiful in it at a concentration that is standard. And then sites that have petroleum-related contaminants.
The wells are across the street or are they part of this?
Across the Boulevard are, are wells that were installed on behalf of Beaching.
Okay, okay. So they have to be, and they're cleaned out, you said, or they are?
About petroleum.
Yes, okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Any other questions?
I just had one quick question. With all the DEP and the State of New Jersey coordination, is this something, and have you actually kept Borough Beaching up to speed on all the steps? Are you required to or not required?
We're not, we are required to notify the public, which includes copying the Borough in certain situations when we do a remediation, for example. But when, when you get to a certain point in remediation. So whatever has been required to do, we've done. We have uber notified the Borough at this point. And we are committed and have committed to keeping them up to date every time we're doing something. There's not a whole lot of requirements to put things together in reports and submit them to DEP, but we are committed to sharing the data as we generate it with you so that you can say it and your LSRP can comment, so.
So you can come in, remove soil and never file anything with local municipalities, just scrub it out?
Well, I, tanks we have to get permits for, right?
Tank closures require a, a building permit, demolition permit. Typically, yeah.
And we have to put a well in the street or something?
Right, something in the right-of-way. The county right-of-way. We'd be applying for road open permits or in the Twelve Street right-of-way road open permit.
So there's quite a lot of cleanup still to do, it seems.
Potentially, you know, I mean, I think it depends upon, again, what does, what does the data set that needs to be done?
What does the preliminary data say?
The preliminary data says that there's impact underneath the building and we need to figure out what volume of material is impacted and that will drive how the remedies to be done. So it could be leave it in place and put a low permeability cap over it, like a building foundation or a concrete driveway. It could be something where we do some type of incident treatment, injection of a chemical oxidant into the ground to oxidize contaminants in place, physical removal by excavation and also disposal. But again, the, the process is iterative and it's all based on what the data shows.
How long will it take to, to know that? I mean, the, the rate you're going now, what do you think?
So depending on what the remedy is, if the remedy is to leave material in place, maybe two years of groundwater monitoring.
No, how long, how long will you, until you know which direction you're going?
I'd say when we have more groundwater monitoring data. And that will probably happen fourth quarter this year will be our next round of groundwater samples and probably first quarter next year. We'll definitely have some better ideas of what appropriate approaches are.
And, and another question, I, I'm sorry. But i- if this is a passive activity, if you go the passive route versus the active route, which probably I don't want to commend, but, I mean, so this has been contaminated since nineteen ninety-four. And so there's a lot of time involved in that. So it seems to me that you need an active process to get rid of this.
Unfortunately, we don't have a book of groundwater data to evaluate concentration trends. What we do know is that concentrations in groundwater, let's say for benzene, which is one of the contaminants of concern, is onsite at concentrations that exceed the groundwater quality standard of one microgram per liter by, you know, concentrations are ten to eleven microgram per liter. And those concentrations are delineated with the off-site blocks. We know benzene's not moving past the off-site.
Even though it's been there since ninety-four?
Okay, thank you.
Can I say something in between all this? You know, I get the impression the Borough Council requested a study and the purpose of this study was to designate a redevelopment. Obviously, there's a condemnation element attached to it. But I think the Borough got frustrated that things weren't moving along. And in order to quote "light a fire" under the applicant, they went with this procedure. It doesn't mean they have to go to condemnation, but if the Borough designates it a redevelopment property, we have designated other properties in town in need of redevelopment, there may be some advantages to the applicant. I think Mr. Mallie would have to speak to that. I don't know if there's tax advantages or whatever if a developer comes in to use the property. But I think the purpose of this was to, you know, move things along and not let the ball drop. And it gives the Borough a mechanism if they need it. And I don't think the Borough wants to take this over.
We don't. I, I guarantee.
They want to see this thing move along just like the applicant does, but this is just a mechanism, you know, to hold the carrot out there and say, okay, listen, if you don't do it in a timely manner, you know, we might be able to come in and, and take it over. But I, I'm sure the Borough does not wholeheartedly want to step in and take this property over. But, but there is a step in the process, and this is one of them, just to have it in your pocket. I don't know how simply I can say that.
I have never heard condemnation referred to as a carrot before.
Okay, I'm sorry, but.
So you can imagine that someone, we have people interested in this property. We have someone who wants to come in and has a use for the property. They're not going to buy this property if, if there's a possibility of it being condemned. Nobody does that. That, that's a huge threat hanging over somebody. And it is, at this point in time, just not necessary. We're, we are, besides us being voluntarily committed, it's mandatory. We've got money posted. The state is monitoring what we're doing. So the Borough really can't add anything to that process at this point. Years ago, yes, absolutely, but, but not today. So I, I do want, I do want to emphatically say that condemnation is a very, very big stick and will actually inhibit the redevelopment of this property. Because nobody's going to put out money if they know a municipality can come in and, and take it, so.
So, so what I'm thinking is, if, if we, if, if we say, okay, we're not going to condemn this property, we're not, we're not going to rehabilitate it. And that's why I'm asking you the question, how long is it going to take before you know what you have to do? And I, I mean, we, we could tonight say, no, we're not going to pass this, but we're, we're going to give you so many months to evaluate this and, and go back.
I hate to interrupt you, but before you go to having discussions like this, maybe if we close the public hearing and then we could, we could.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right.
Right, sorry.
Thanks, Jen.
Carried away here.
Yeah, okay. I did want to mention, though, we are going to know, you had asked about how soon will we know? And Mark was pretty much talking about groundwater. But from a soil perspective, we're going to know pretty quickly.
We're going to have soil data in a few weeks. The soil data will help us quantify the impactedness. The groundwater data is what determines whether that soil can remain in place or not. And in light of the fact that we don't have very high concentrations of contaminants in groundwater, specifically the petroleum-related contaminants, and in light of the fact that the discharge has been in place since nineteen ninety-four or before, it doesn't appear to be migrating, which suggests that the soil can stay in place. The question becomes, we need to, the, the answer to, to the question that we have is, does the groundwater data set show decreasing trends? And that monitored natural attenuation is actually already occurring? It probably is. Because if there was a discreet discharge of gasoline to groundwater, you'd have much higher concentrations than ten microgram per liter. Since we're there, that suggests to me that there's more, a bigger period of natural attenuation over time. And in natural attenuation, soil is one. So I don't have a crystal ball. Other sites with concentrations on this order, you know, we have not excavated soil, we've left in place. And we've addressed through a deep notice and engineering control for soil and a monitored natural attenuation program for groundwater that's been proved or by permits issued by DEP. So I'd say before a permit's going to be issued by DEP, we're looking at probably two years for groundwater monitoring, six years for the DEP to review that permit application. Three to, three to three and a half years.
But again, that's.
Before remediation is complete.
But that's for, from the groundwater perspective, which does not prevent the redevelopment of the site.
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not, okay? It's, once we get the soil under, under control and he knows what needs to be done, that's it. By, by, I'm going to go on a limb, but at, by this point, before the, before next summer, there will be, at very least, a sign saying that something's coming as long as they're uninhibited in who they can deal with in the future of the property.
And a key component of any remediation is to make sure that the site is not going to impact receptors. Surface water bodies, drinking water supply, vapor intrusion into structures. The concentrations that we've identified on the site at this point do not represent a vapor intrusion threat. And we haven't found any impacts to surface water or drinking water supply because we're delineating very close to the problem. And any potential receptors other than the surface water in the bay, which groundwater flows away from the bay, or a great distance, that were not a concern. I drink the water of Beaching.
So, right.
My mother-in-law lives on Brooklyn. So you know, not only do I drink the water, I have a license. It exposes me to personal liability if there are issues. You know, not only did I take a test and, you know, have a good educational background for it, but I also needed to step up to the plate and say, this is what I want to do, but if something goes wrong, I can face personal liability. I don't like to advertise. But that's what comes with this territory.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank, thank you for listening. Appreciate it.
Is there anybody else in the public like to get up and address this issue, make a comment?
Good afternoon. My name is Chris DeFrancia. I'm an attorney locally. Some of you I may have met when I was working at, with Dick Shackleton. May he rest in peace. So I just wanted to mention that.
Your address, please.
Yeah, my address is Five Popper Street, Manahawk in New Jersey.
Thank you.
And I represent the party who's interested in purchasing, who remains interested in purchasing. And I have been in contact with the owners over the last few years, probably at least on a monthly basis to monitor what's going on. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention for your consideration. And it's obviously a complex site. That's why it's been years in the work, working. We're actually happy to hear some of the, the news that we got here tonight and glad to hear that things are moving along. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, can I have a motion to close to public, please?
So move. Second?
Thank you, Nathan.
So I just want to review a couple things. One, one is, go back to the beginning. Your, your, your charge for tonight is whether or not the property satisfies the two conditions that were laid out in Frank Little's report. Those conditions are environmental contamination that causes dilapidated state, that, that is a detriment to the safety, health, welfare of the community. And the second being that the property has been vacant for an extended period of time. So all of the other issues, I know you've gotten into a lot about what's next and you've heard that there's been things that have been happening pretty recently. I think the testing was done, the testimony was, the testimony. I think the testing was done, the testimony was, the testing was done last week. So there are things that have been happening. But what I, bless you, but I want to suggest to you is that you do what your responsibility is on this designation. When it comes to the use of condemnation, I'll just disagree with Kathy. We do a lot of things together, have over the years. But we've done agreements to not use condemnation, even though the authority's there for a certain period of time. The latest one was the Upper Township, the BL England site. Big old electric generation that you see every time you're heading south on the Parkway. Environmental contamination. We're going to clean it up. We're going to clean it up. We just did agreement, said, fine, you have this much time, do something with it, or we want that affared. And your line earlier, Mayor, about there's no cause and effect, there's only, but there's association in the PD. Well, there's been a lot happening over the last few months. So tonight, your responsibility is to determine whether or not this, these properties satisfy those two criteria that your planners laid out. You make a recommendation back to the governing body. They decide whether or not to designate. They, if they designate as a condemnation area, that's for them to make decisions about how do they negotiate? What do they do? What, what, what are any point they do down the road? Okay, that's all. Just wanted to give you that quick. That's what you're here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, any comments?
Well, I do have a question.
Sure.
So Kathy, the attorney,
Yes.
said that if, if we did designate this as condemnation, it would impede the process. Why?
Absolutely. I, I, we, we disagree. I absolutely would not. Because in the redevelopment, actually, if things are rolling along and they're doing this work, redevelopment designation offers them a lot of other options and benefits that could help and make it easier to develop the property. The gentleman that says he represents the buyer, who's been around for a while, he didn't mention that, hey, do condemnation, we're not interested anymore. It's just simply, you have that, 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 that weapon in your arsenal, but you don't have to use it. And in this case, if things are, at least what I've heard, as things are moving along, there's no need to go use it. You just need to help. In fact, we would do all we could to help the project along. There have been, I, I've seen arrangements done where, because there's access to funds at the DEP, HDR, SRF money, I've done transactions where the property owner, owner will change, transfer title to the Borough so that you can get money to clean it up under an agreement that we, then we change, transfer it back after its point. So there's a lot of options that redevelopment does. Doesn't mean you're doing condemnation tomorrow, okay? But tonight, that's not your focus. It doesn't matter. All that does not matter. What matters is Frank's report. Does it fit under either one of those criteria today? And if it does, then you make a recommendation back that it does. And then the governing body takes it from there.
Right.
Okay?
So in essence, we can't recommend passing for redevelopment without including condemnation?
You, that's what's been referred to you, okay?
Right.
What's been referred to you is a designation, a condemnation, redevelopment designation. That's what you would, you recommend it or you don't recommend?
So, right, and.
You can make comments if you want.
Comments about maybe reconsidering.
Right.
You can do that. That's not binding on that. It's all, all, it's recommendations. It's just a recommendation now.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Everybody understand that? Any comments? Nope. I would make that recommendation.
Yes.
That if not, I would not recommend condemnation back to the board, to the council. I think they.
We, yeah, I think you're saying what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
That we, I mean, I think we're obligated to vote for rehab.
Right.
Because it does meet that criteria.
Right.
But we would, we would make a statement saying that we don't recommend condemnation unless nothing happens.
Right.
I mean, I don't know if we.
Right.
I mean, it's a recommendation. It's not a mandate, but I.
Resolution that you have kind of before you sort of condemnation. So you would vote no on that, and then your comments would go back to the council and then maybe.
Right, right, got it.
Consider a non-condemnation. But we're not voting on that.
For redevelopment?
So you would vote to deny the resolution. You would not adopt the resolution.
So you.
So, okay, so listen, you, you've got it. What's been referred to you is a condemnation redevelopment designation. You should vote on that.
Yes.
You should vote on, on that. You can then make a recommendation, even voting to recommend that it be designated a condemnation redevelopment area. You can vote on that. You can also add a recommendation that says, gee, we really hope that condemnation isn't used unless it's the last possible option in the history of the world. You could make those recommendations. But what's been said to you is that, is that, that referral from the governing body. That's what you need to vote on, okay? If you, if you vote no on that, then it's not designated a redevelopment area. Okay? All right?
But it does meet the criteria as a redevelopment area.
And that, your, your, your charge is to decide if there's credible evidence that it meets that criteria. If it does, then you recommend it be, it be designated as a redevelopment area. As I said beginning, condemnation doesn't change anything in this. Changes nothing. Same evaluation, same review. The decision of whether or not condemnation is included is governing body's decision, not the plan's decision.
Okay.
Okay?
I just have one question about this. It says building was vacant. Okay?
Yes.
Well, isn't rental space considered not vacant? Wasn't it rented?
It has to be occupied, even though.
It has to be occupied. So it can't be a storage.
It can't just lay in waste and have a lease.
Can't be a storage unit?
It can't be a storage unit that they were making.
Well, first of all, if it's a storage building, that's not a permitted use in the business district zone. They would need a use variance in order to allow it strictly for storage.
Okay, because that's what I thought it was being used.
And it doesn't have any, any site plan for strictly a storage use.
Okay, all right. That's all I have. All right. Any other questions?
Can I have one more question? Has it been the same owner since 1994?
I don't know.
Yes. 1907.
1907.
Okay. Been a hundred years.
Yeah. We propose it to public comment.
Right.
Yeah. But he's the.
You're on the board.
Well, I understand, or I heard, in 2019, the building, we received a building promise for a handicapped bathroom. Was there any condemnation reports or data after that permit was issued? Or are we starting over? That's what I'm.
For a handicapped bathroom? Nothing ever happened. The building's been vacant since 19, or 2017.
So since 2019, nothing's happened after the permit.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm not in children.
Listen, I, I understand everybody has questions about what the plan is, what's been done. None of that is relevant to what you're here to decide, okay? None of it. Doesn't matter. If all that matters is, you have Mr. Little's report. Does it satisfy either one of the criteria? Has it been not used for an extended period of time? That, that's all you're here for. Everything else, we can talk about after. Government body can do in negotiations with the property owner to make something happen, all of it. This is limited to that designation. That's it. That's all you're here for.
So we're going to vote on this resolution now?
Yeah.
Okay, can I have a motion to vote on this resolution? I am assuming there are no more questions? No? You've all seen the resolution. It was sent to you through the, here. Can I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
To approve.
That we approve it as redevelopment, because it definitely meets those criteria. However, I would like to put something in that motion stating about the condemnation.
Right. And what would you like?
Well, that we have the option to reconsider it or not use it, whatever the wording must be. That it's not automatic, that it's going to be condemned.
That would only be if you're, if you're approving the resolution, that would only be a recommendation to the governing body. But they are not required to.
Right. Okay.
There's a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Nancy.
Mrs. Davis.
Nancy.
Mayor Davis.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Metal.
No.
Mrs. Paul Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Edels.
Penny.
Sorry. Yes. Mrs. Leonard.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Jenna.
He's not here.
Mr. Tinquist.
Yes.
Mr. Balbo.
Yes.
Um, should I do Mr. Lefredo?
He's here.
He's in Zoom.
Okay, he's here.
Mr. Lefredo, are you here in Zoom?
Let me look. No.
Mr. Wanger.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
All right. Along with application 2023, I'm going to recuse myself. Tom Metal will take over the application for now. Good luck. So Kathy.
I'm nervous this one's like. I have a little place, Mayor Davis. Yeah, no problem. This is your mission.
They're, yeah, he's not there.
Why don't we do it now and remind the people?
I have an extra one.
All right, good evening, everybody. Just to reiterate, please, no cheering, no clapping, et cetera, like that. It's understand that people are passionate about, about the issue here. It's not whether or not they're good people, the holiday snack bar legacy, anything like that. It's about doing the correct thing for the community and the businesses. The decision is for the perpetuity of the property. So it's not just for these people. If they decide next week they win the Powerball tonight and they're out of town and, and we vote for something that might not be good for the community, we have to weigh all that. It's in perpetuity, like I said.
Comments are going to be limited to three minutes. And we're going to let everyone who hasn't spoken go, and then if you need to come back again, you may, depending on time. Just, there's site plan issues that, that this applicant is presenting, but it's also an application for an expansion of a non-conforming use. Expansion of a lawfully created, pre-existing non-conforming use requires a D variance. The applicant is required to satisfy the positive and negative criteria for a D variance, which means that it's authorized in particular cases and for special reasons. So the board has to find if the applicant is able to distinguish this property from other properties in the zone. The applicant has to show why this specific property on this specific site is entitled to relief from the requirements of the zone. In this case, the zone is limited to residential use. This commercial presence is, is located in a residential neighborhood. The special reasons is the positive criteria, which is demonstrated when a refusal to permit the expansion would, would work an undue hardship on the applicant. This is an existing business, so prohibiting the expansion of this business or maintaining the status quo create an undue hardship on this applicant. With that in mind, I just want you to consider these factors when listening to the applicant.
Counsel?
Thank you. Good evening, James Raven, on behalf of the applicant 401 Center Street LLC. So since we were here last time, there was a revised site plan that was submitted to the board. And the proposed outdoor seating, as shown on that plan, is how the outdoor seating is currently laid out at the property. In the event any of the board members have visited the site. It's my understanding since the last meeting, this is the way it's been arranged. So if you have visited the site since then, the way it's laid out in this plan is how it's currently laid out at the property. And I, I did receive Mr. Leahy's letter, who's counsel on behalf of the app, the neighbor, the Harkners, prior to this meeting, and reviewed Mr. Little's letter, and there was a discussion of the overall seats increasing. And the applicant took that into consideration. And what the applicant would like to propose, the outdoor seating as shown on the plan will remain the same. That's how they would like to have it with 48, a maximum of 48 outdoor seats, with the total number at the establishment being 72. So we're not, we don't want to put a firm number on the inside because if it's inclement weather, there may be a situation where they pull a few more seats inside. But what the applicant is proposing is 72 overall seats with the outdoor capacity not to exceed 48 seats. And again, it would be the configuration of the outdoor seats is as shown on the plan that we've submitted. And the plan also shows a proposed buffer. Mr. Little noted in his letter that he would like the buffer to continue all the way to the, to the shed in the corner of the property. Now, while the applicant is willing to fill in, there's an area behind the two evergreen trees that's shown on the plan in the proposed buffer. The applicant is, is willing to fill in that area. However, then there's a fence within the applicant's property that fences off the, the northwest corner where the shed is. And the applicant would like to keep that area clear of a buffer, being that there's no customers in that area. But it's used for storage, and being that the site is so small, it's important to the applicant to be able to have some storage area. So they would like to propose to buffer up to that fence area. There is a fence in that area adjacent to the shed that is along the property line that separates it with the neighbor. But rather than putting a planted buffer on the north side of that fence within the property, the applicant would prefer to just have it remain as is with storage adjacent to the shed, as well as have the shed remain where it's located. And the location of the shed is the same as it was when the applicant purchased the property. One other thing I wanted to note, I'll, I'll mark an exhibit because I know there was a question from some of the board members at the last hearing. And the applicant addressed the permitted occupancy within the restaurant itself. So apparently, since the last meeting, the fire marshal has visited the property. And the maximum occupant capacity within the building itself is 71. And I'll just mark that as an. And I'll just mark that as an exhibit. Obviously, that's not a number of seats inside. That's the the maximum occupancy within the building. And I'm going to mark this. I don't think there were any exhibits marked on behalf of the applicant at the last meeting. So I think this is A1. Is that correct?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, so this will be A1. And as the board can see in the plan, the applicant also, with the proposed buffer, relocate relocated the tables as much as they could away from the the neighbor's property that's adjacent to the west. So where we previously had picnic tables all along the westerly side of the building, those have been relocated. And we'd like to proceed with the the tables as shown on the plan. And being that the plan has changed, we'll have Mr. Brzezinski testify again regarding the revised plan, provide the variance proofs, and then we'll hear from the applicant again as well. At this time, I'll call Mr. Brzezinski.
Mr. Brzezinski, you sound as far as affirm to the testimony you're about to give before this board, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
You've already been.
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Brzezinski, I've given a little background about the revised plan, but if you could get into some more detail of what we're proposing, please.
Yeah. The the site plan I prepared simply shows the existing property. It's at the center intersection of Center Street and Delaware Avenue, fifty foot of frontage on Center Street, seventy one foot of frontage on Delaware Avenue. It's currently developed with a one-story restaurant. And, you know, we're showing on the plan the outdoor seating where we've got sixteen outdoor seats on the east side of the building, twelve outdoor seats on the south side of the building, and another fourteen kind of in the southwest corner. We're showing a ten-foot wide buffer up to from the front property line back to, there's two large evergreen trees towards the rear of the property. So we provided a double row of arborvitae right up to the evergreen trees. To the west side of the evergreen trees is a six-foot solid fence. These evergreen trees, they're about twenty foot tall, and they've been pruned probably to about six foot, so they're they're open underneath. It's my understanding that, I guess, in Mr. Little's review letter, he'd prefer us to continue that buffer up to the, well, up to the shed. The applicants are willing to continue the double row of arborvitae as much as possible up to the the fence prior to the shed. So I could probably get another maybe ten arborvitae between where it's currently ending and the and the fence. We're requesting a total, actually, there's, from what my understanding is, there's some documentation that there are seventy two seats at the site prior to COVID. We're proposing to continue the seventy two seats, however, we're requesting.
Mr. Brzezinski, if I could just interrupt you, I'm sorry, for one moment. The plan that's being showed on the screen is the, that's the original application that was submitted. If we could just show the revised plan, please, prepared by Horne Tyson and Yoder, just so there's no confusion. Okay, yeah, so that's the revised plan that was submitted. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Brzezinski, you can continue.
I don't even know where I was.
Sorry.
So we're looking for a total of forty eight seats maximum outside with a total of seventy two total on the property. The site plan also, I've gone to show in the available on-street parking in the general vicinity. As you can see, on the east side of Delaware Avenue, there's a ten diagonal parking spaces. And then in front of the property on Center Street's additional on-street parking. So there is some on-street parking available. The the property is currently developed with a one-story restaurant with seventy two seats, so we're not increasing the number of seats. So the impact of the neighborhood should be minimal. We are going to provide a vegetated buffer to the west to help keep the anti-detriment away from the neighbor to the west. Outdoor seating is a desired commodity, especially for restaurants. So to deny one restaurant the ability to have outdoor seats while permitting other restaurants to have outdoor seats would be an undue hardship on this property. So the property is in the RB two-family zone. It's not zoned for the restaurant. However, there is a restaurant use there. There's been a restaurant use for what I'm told seventy five years. I don't remember when it opened. And the fact that we're maintaining the number of existing seats, I believe, wouldn't be a detriment to the the general vicinity, general neighborhood.
And Mr. Brzezinski, if you could just touch briefly, I know you, at the prior hearing, addressed the positive and negative criteria, but if you could just summarize that again based upon the fact that we've revised the plan.
I believe the, we're advancing one of the purposes of the municipal land use law, the zoning purposes of, we're providing the general public with enhancing the general welfare and health of the community by providing outdoor seating. As I stated before, outdoor seating is a desired commodity in Beach Haven, in so much as some people will not go to a restaurant if there's no outdoor seating available, and they'll choose a different restaurant to go to. People enjoy the outdoor seating, especially in a beach resort community such as Beach Haven. So I think providing more outdoor seating is a positive. And as I mentioned before, we're not increasing the number of seats at the site, so I don't see this as being a detriment. We're also providing a buffer to the west, which is, again, a positive.
And is there any detriment that you foresee to the the public good or the surrounding property owners?
No, the surrounding property owners are going to benefit by the the ten-foot wide vegetated buffer. We have, from the previous plan to this plan, we removed vast majority of the seats that were in that westerly side yard.
And I noted in the the cover letter with the revised plans that the applicant would now, like, all outdoor seating to commence at eight o'clock AM. Last time, with the location of the tables, we had it staggered at different times, but with the revised proposed location of the tables, the applicant is seeking an eight o'clock start time for all outdoor seating. I just wanted to get that on the record as well. Are there any questions for Mr. Brzezinski?
Yeah, I had a question. Are you familiar with the lighting at the site?
I'm not. Whether the lighting at the site.
I mean, the last time I thought I saw it, there were string lights all over the place, and it was lit up all night long. So I was curious, lighting level-wise, how that has impacted the adjoining properties.
Okay, if we could, should we swear in the applicant again?
You sound as far as affirm to the testimony you're about to give before this board, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
Eileen Boker, 5404 South Long Beach Boulevard.
And Mrs. Boker, Mr. Little had a question regarding the existing lighting at the property. What's there currently?
The same string lights that were there when we purchased the property in 2021.
And how late do those generally stay lit?
We we close at nine, and we generally turn them off when we leave. And prior to that, I think they were on a timer, but I believe it's an inside control switch now. And and we don't even, I don't think they turn on until about eight thirty, so maybe by like nine thirty, ten o'clock at the latest.
And the hours of operation are eight AM to what now?
Eight AM to nine PM, correct?
Correct.
Is that last serving, or does that mean?
Last serving.
Everybody's out of there.
No, I wish. Nine PM is last serving.
And obviously, if we have the buffer, we're not going to have lights within the buffer.
Yeah.
And in the rear area where the picket fence is, I know you're asking not to extend the buffer to the shed, but what what do you store back there outside?
There is a taller rubber made crate that has rakes, push brooms, shovels, gardening tools. There are some empty plastic crates that, when we have extra T-shirts, they move in and out in the shed itself. We have paper supplies. There are the bag-in-a-box soda, the extra towels and aprons that come in from the linen company.
I don't think I was concerned about as much as the shed is continuing the buffer to the shed to ensure we have the buffer. Otherwise, you still need a variance, Jim, for the buffer.
But the, is the buffer required?
Yeah, it's a required buffer between commercial and residential.
I mean, it's the buffer is because the property is in the RB zone. It's the use variant.
Well, you have a nonconforming use, and you want a commercial use in the residential zone, but then your buffering still is triggered.
Except that the buffer requirement is in the business district.
I understand.
Not in the, technically, I don't think of both variants for the buffer would be required. However, we're not looking to.
I understand.
We want to compromise and get to.
Again, my opinion, it's a, it needs a buffer based on the fact that it's a commercial use, and it's bordering a residential property.
Can we buffer with another shed there?
I'm sorry. I was saying that it still requires a buffer. It's it's a commercial use in a residential zone, but it's a commercial use. Commercial use has certain requirements, and a buffer is one of them. And candidly, we're asking for the buffer along the, along the westerly property line, and we, I guess technically, there'd be a variance for the buffer along the northerly line, but obviously, you can't get one in there. The building's only five feet off the line. There's a walkway that you really need to get around the building.
Because that does get you to the bathrooms, and that gives us two egresses for in and out of the yard.
Yeah, and I understand that. And so the question was running the buffer to the shed on the, on the west side made sense. That's the only questions I had at this point.
One quick question.
Yes, when we're done with our.
What was the reason the indoor seating went from thirty to twenty four in the most recent?
Well, we had discussed it and thought that we wanted to keep the overall seats at the site consistent with what it's been in the past, where with thirty two seats inside, it brings the overall total to eighty seats, which we felt it was a more fair compromise to go back to seventy two seats, which is consistent with with what was at the site previously as a total number. We showed the plan with thirty two seats. Technically, it could still have up to thirty two seats if it's a rainy day. Could, you know, or if it fits more in there. Basically, as I stated previously, we asked for the total number to be seventy two with the maximum outside at forty eight.
Jim, the last actual approval that you had for this site was under the current ordinance, which, when they came for that application, it limited it to thirty six outdoor seats. That was the last official approval by the borough in-house that didn't require land use board approval. That's my understanding.
Is that accurate, Mrs. Boker?
June 10, 2022, there was an application.
Was that the one that was crossed off from forty five to thirty six?
Right. And thirty six outdoor seats were approved by the borough manager, and that was it. And after that, extra seats got there, and that's how we got here. But I have a right to ask for them. You're here for a site plan.
Right.
Just pointing out that at one point, there was an approval without coming here for thirty six outdoor seats.
There, there was. When we purchased in 2021, we were told that there was no documentation on any outside seating ever, the holiday snack bar. In our first season, we were held to forty five seats outside. In 2022, when we went in to, again, apply for the outside dining permit, we were then granted thirty six seats outside. And then after the last land use board meeting, we had never been made aware of the 2020 document that was for COVID, but the previous owner had been granted a total of seventy two seats outside. And then there was also a ten-top table that we never talk about, so it was actually eighty two. So the thirty six was what we were held to last year. So we had thirty six.
Official approval is property had, was for thirty six.
And and yet, they also continually told us at the town hall, and this was Veeve and Sherry Mason, that forty, we we had to choose forty five seats. You either have forty five seats outside or forty five seats inside. And and yet, with the occupancy, the way the ordinance reads for the business district, is that your outside dining can't exceed your occupancy, which is seventy one. So we have forty eight seats outside, whereby the ordinance for the business district, I could have up to seventy one. We're not asking for that. We're just asking for what has been there since 2020 or 2011, which was a total of seventy seats.
Seventy one occupancy, that has to include your staff. Otherwise, nobody's making food for you.
For the, for the inside of the building, not the outside. There is no occupancy limit for the outside.
That's correct.
The ordinance that I'm referring to is the one that bases it's one thirty seven, and I think my glasses, not a contact, one thirty seven dash three, expanded outdoor dining areas. The total amount of seats available to patrons shall, and this is speaking on the outside dining, shall not exceed the permitted occupancy of the establishment. Because I think, as the borough was probably doing this, and I can't think for them, they were thinking, well, we don't want folks to all of a sudden have two hundred seats outside because the fire marshal doesn't limit it. But as a town, they just wanted to make sure that everything wasn't growing faster than people could handle.
So is that wraparound counter? I haven't been in there.
Shame on you. I think I'll go now. It's a block away. Kicks on me.
Is a wraparound counter installed for this plan right now?
That wraparound counter has been there since nineteen forty seven.
And so you think they could get seventy two seats inside there?
No.
No, no, no.
That's the total occupancy for the building. Seating, seating has been set.
Kitchen area and everything.
Right. Since the last meeting, the fire marshal gave a number of seventy one total for the building, including everyone.
It's eighteen inches per person.
My guy.
Right? And so the actual seating, he had said to me, is about forty two inside. We've never done that. That would require putting seats on the inside, but we have the right to, as long as the property doesn't, the inside capacity isn't over seventy one. It's usually a kid cooking burgers, two servers, a dishwasher, three prep people, two people in the back bakery.
My question, Frank, is that they, they indicated at the last meeting that they had to purchase a fire hood or grill for the inside?
We, we put a hood and ansel system to bring it up to the current fire code.
All right. So did the fire marshal or fire chief come in and say, because of that hood, you had to reduce your inside seating?
We, we didn't have to reduce it. We had to move seats away from the hood in the cook area. It would be like having people eat in your kitchen in a restaurant.
So the reduction, based on the documentation I read, in 2020, there was forty seven inside seats.
Correct.
Okay, so the reduction now to twenty four has nothing to do with the fire hood or the.
No, that has us just keeping the number at seventy two because we, we just didn't want to overtax. We didn't want to have to go for the special variance. We didn't need to have more seats. I mean, those seats really allow for an appropriate flow in the kitchen, and it actually has decreased the number of patrons waiting.
But she didn't lose all those seats because of the hood. You made some business decisions on how you reshuffle your seats.
No, we met a fire code.
But it looks like from the plan, you removed the seating on the north side of the seating in order to accommodate.
Because the.
Another equipment that are showing in that plan before there was seating.
Right. We brought it.
You decided to put in other equipment there.
No, the, the fire marshal, when he came through, said to us, that is not a safe place to have patrons sit. said to us, that is not a safe place to have patrons sit. In the event of a fire, the cooks need to be, get, be able to get over to the stop to pull for the ansel. And if you had customers sitting there, they could be in the way. So the, the workers know to stay towards the, there is an ice tea machine, the plates are there for the grill, there are registers. However, we were instructed not to have patrons sitting there.
They went from 45 down to 32.
Correct.
And now you're asking for 24, right?
Well, we have 24 now. Yes.
But that's what you're saying indoors will be 24.
Correct. Unless on a rainy day, we can have up to 32. Actually, it's a little bit higher for the fire marshal, but that's the number set by the fire marshal.
Eileen, with the 48 outside seats, I, I, I read that one of the, one of the temporary site plan approvals had six feet between the tables. I mean, that, that, that was, that was one of their recommendations.
That was a COVID requirement.
Oh, that was a COVID requirement? How, how many feet between the tables will there be with the, with the?
Three.
Three feet? And is that enough room for staff to go?
It's been very easy to flow. It actually has worked better than the seats over on the west side. It's keeping everything towards the front, east side of the building. The only people that are going around to the back are to get to the bathrooms because those of you that have been to the holiday, I don't know if you realize, but the bathrooms are not inside the building proper. They're, they're almost like at an old school gas station where you have to go around to the back of the building. And, and quite honestly, if we hadn't spent this money on litigation and all this fun stuff, we were hoping to put in some ADA handicap accessible bathrooms, but that will come next hopefully.
The submitted plan shows 32 inside and 48 outside, just 80 total, but you're saying that's not.
We, we are going to reduce it.
Right, the total number.
A total number of seats to 72.
Which is 24 inside.
Correct.
Well, yeah, the number outside is not to exceed 48. The inside will fluctuate depending on the weather, but the total number cannot exceed 72. And the outdoor seating cannot exceed 48.
How would you monitor?
Just based on the, if, if it's a nice day, they can't seat more than 24 inside.
But how, who'd monitor? How do you monitor?
Unless they.
Well, the number, on a nice day, the number, the number of stools.
Right. Well, yeah, it would be up to the staff to monitor that.
How are they monitoring it at other restaurants? I know. Asking a question.
Frank indicated that the 2022 approval was for 36 outside. Were, were you able to be at maximum capacity with the 36 outside? What, what do you mean exactly?
36 people outside.
Oh.
Yeah, we were, we were fine. 36 people outside. We, we were fine in 2021 when we purchased this place and we had 45 seats outside. And then when indoor, indoor dining opened up, we had 45 seats inside. So I put the hood in. We were operating that year with 90. No one said anything. Is when we wanted to serve breakfast, everyone seemed to get a little crazy.
Okay. Just want to make sure you had the volume.
We got it. We have takeout going on too. So the kitchen flow has actually been pretty tremendous.
Frank, you indicated in your letter for the buffer that you wanted a landscaping plan.
Yeah.
Well, they provided a plan with showing the planting on the drawing and they've laid them in staggered rows.
But that's just have a lot. I thought you wanted an actual landscape.
No, I mean, I, this is sufficient for what we need to do. I just wanted that things extended back so that we had the full buffer on the easterly side or westerly side where you could actually obtain that buffer.
Yeah, one of, one of my things I asked the fire for the shed, the shed sitting on the property going, you know, I think we've heard a little bit of what we have in there, but the combustible items and things like that. I don't believe that the shed doesn't be.
Yeah, I, I, we, we discussed that and I, we did take that into consideration. Really, it's the, the way the site is situated. There's just really not sufficient space for storage. This, the shed is in the same location it was when the applicant bought it. They received a resale certificate of occupancy with it in that location. So the desire would be to leave it in its current location.
Have you looked at other locations? Other places, whether it was a place in the building that's used so many times? And what did that shed really do?
Jim, speaking to your mind.
I'm sorry. I had one of those a while ago.
Answer. There, there's nothing combustible in the shed. It's bag in a box soda. It is towels. It is aprons. There's a couple of old KitchenAid mixers and paper storage, paper towels, toilet paper, shopping bags. The, the shed had been there when Glenn had owned it. And again, we received the CO with the shed where it was.
And the shed almost serves as a buffer itself based upon its location.
And in fact, we could probably put a smaller second shed to the west side for more storage. I mean, storage is always tight.
So the question, I, I mean, are there other locations though?
Just in, in.
In the buffer.
Just in that northwest corner.
I mean, we'd have to set it five feet off each.
It's got to be on 5 feet now. Yeah, I didn't, I don't think, Jim, I don't think there was really a problem leaving the shed where it was. Really had no issue at last meeting with it. And there's really no other place to put it.
Now, the issue is being, is being on the property law.
No, it is. And it, and it.
And it doesn't belong there.
Been there forever. But I, I agree.
Well, not forever. It's not that old. It's, you know.
I mean, I agree it's there, but the property's only 50 by 71. So there's not a lot of room here to, to move things around. So I really didn't have as much, any kind of issue with the shed as much as, you know, getting the fire buffer up to the shed.
Okay.
And then I have a question about the number of seats. Do we really need 48? I, at one point, I thought we were talking 40, but now I'm hearing, seeing 48 again. So that's something else the board has to consider in terms of the spacing of the tables. And it's 48 too much, or if you had 40, you could spread things out a little bit, but you know, that's something you have to make a determination.
I don't, I'd also like to ask for the size of the tables. I mean, the, the diameter, I guess, of the round tables are, they're not on the plan. So the size.
Tables, I think, are 60 inches long.
I was expecting that to be, one of my concerns is that we're approving a site plan. And so if somebody wants to come and check it two years from now or three years from now, it's what we said it was. All of a sudden, tables didn't grow. Or they're where we said they are. So to me, the diameter of the tables is important to be on the plan. I think the length of the picnic tables, you know, they're, they're showing us picnic tables. Are they four-foot picnic tables or six-foot picnic tables?
Six inches by.
They're five foot. They're scaling six foot. Picnic tables. The tables are scaling about four foot.
Well, I know, but you can buy an eight-foot table. You can buy a six-foot table. I don't. I just didn't want to see them grow. That's why I was trying to get something very definitive on the plan to protect everyone in the future.
That detail can certainly be added to the plan.
Um, I have a question.
I, I understand, but I had asked at the last meeting, you know, for the sizes of the tables, the locations of the tables. I think that's important.
And just so you don't feel special, we beat up Tucker's pretty well with this. They have a property that's 60 by 56 with a total of 33, 60 square feet for 48 tables.
48 tables.
48 seats, excuse me. So your whole entire property is 35, 50. So that's not including the building that you cook the food at.
Correct.
You know what I mean? So that's why, same, same type of situation backing up to a residential area. So it's kind of important for us to try to get this situated right first.
I also have a question. I agree with you about the buffer, that it should be extended to the shed area. But also, I have a concern. I was there last week with a friend having dinner always. But I have a concern about bikes. Where we were sitting in the center street location, you take those square tables and go over. We were at like the farthest one over. And by the time we left dinner, we couldn't get out because everybody was parking in the stones, on the sidewalk, everywhere. So my concern, I know you have a bike rack on Delaware. However, I have a basket for my bike and it couldn't get in there. So I ended up tying it to the telephone pole. So bikes are kind of everywhere. And I think the sidewalk there on Delaware is bad news as far as people being able to traverse that sidewalk. So is there another area where you can put more bike racks?
Maybe like one of those. What about if I put them back by the shed instead of a buffer? Oh.
Yeah, that's just like commotion.
Yeah, I mean.
But is it possible to take just one table out of those one, two, three, four, five you have? Take one out to make more room for an additional bike rack?
For every seat that we take away, I have to fire a kid. Or increase my prices.
I have a, I have a question.
Yeah, we were 60.
Is there any variances for, or rules for how close the picnic table is to the sidewalk? That real, that is like almost on the sidewalk.
Mainly, we want to make sure the sidewalk is kept open and this sidewalk is over six foot in width. So as long as the sidewalk's clear.
And being in a residential area, is there any proposal to clean up the side yard? I saw a surfboard up in a tree today.
It's kind of a, it's kind of a motif. It's like a decoration for us.
Really?
Yeah, we're at the beach. Maybe I was from Sandy.
I'm just concerned about the number of bikes that seem, of course, everybody.
Do you have any idea for us? I mean, I think.
I don't know. In the front, you have.
I know the public lots down at the other end, right?
Delaware, you have.
The town puts some.
Picnic tables. Is there any more? And that's where you have the other bike rack on Delaware.
Right.
But that needs to be adjusted because people with baskets can't get their bikes in there at all.
You can back it in. Some of the folks do that.
Maybe. All right. But that is.
Yeah, and we can, we can.
We need more somehow, somewhere. Places for them to put them, not.
Yeah, like, well, you don't think that we could get them back by the shed? I mean, that, my workers put their bikes back along that, that backside fence.
What about maybe a little bit closer to the adjoining property? I know there's a 10-foot buffer to the, and you have it drawn out to the edge of the right of way. Maybe you put a bike rack or two right in that area in the lower left-hand side. That'll get some of, that'll tighten them up so that they're maybe standing up and so they pile it up.
They, they would be in the buffer then. I mean, as long as they can.
Put the buffer far enough out away from the, I mean, you know.
Oh, no, I agree. I think, I think so maybe to take that rack and turn it north, south. Instead of right now, we have that rack kind of east, west. If I turn it that way.
Yeah. Is there, is there a rack there now?
Well, the, the recycling things go there. That's where deliveries come in. That, that would be a tough area. And you know, we could do more of them here. I, I think this is what Glenn always had. So I think habitually, that's where people put them. But you see what she's saying. Right now, my practice is this way. Southwest.
Maybe, maybe relocate or get rid of a four-top and a six-top. I know it's, it's for kids, but maybe those seats or pickets inside. And maybe put them towards, towards over there.
I'd rather ask people not to ride their bikes. I don't want to fire any of the kids. We've got seven weeks left of the summer.
But I do think the egress on that side.
We'll work on that. We, we can.
Is, is one more rack sufficient? Because I think we can.
It's a big one. The little one doesn't do it. It's like five bikes. It has to be a big one.
I would say I like the drawing, the way you've done it, moving, moving the tables around to the other side. Moving them out into the public, uh, more close to the street, both Delaware and, and center. But that's still, there's no, there's no sidewalk. That's, that's another problem. I mean, luckily for them, they don't have a sidewalk. It's, it, we're shoehorning stuff in and something that's unfortunately, something's got to give.
Am I the only one that's concerned about bikes?
Maybe some signage that asks people not to, to be mindful for their bikes not to be on the sidewalk. Let's put everything we can, right? Valley Bike Park.
I mean, we were actually blocked in. We couldn't get out of our table. No way around it.
How happy that the bikes were still there though.
I have a question.
Sure.
I don't know whether you finished your room. Did you finish what you were?
I think so. It was about the bicycle and the bicycle rack.
Yesterday, I went into the restaurant to take, and it was during a time when the weather was bad. So there weren't a lot of customers in there. So I was able to take a look and the way that your, your stools are set up inside was that were, they were just flush against each other. Now, if that's how you're counting it, how can people sit inside unless they're staggered? And they're actually moved, part of your group is sit back from the counter and part of it's up at the counter. There's no way that you could have, there was no room for people, only for stools run right next to each other.
The, the code by the fire marshal is every 18 inches. And believe it or not, when it is busy and, and remember, we've actually reduced the stools by almost 20. So there were 20 more stools in there prior to us purchasing and, and moving things around. So sometimes customers will move some away. They'll push them towards the wall. Other times, they will move up and they will squeeze in. And when the Whiting's owned it, the, the reason they wanted them that close was Mr. Whiting didn't want them staying a long time. He thought the elbow to elbow would make it uncomfortable. The idea was to get in, eat your hamburger, get a piece of cake and get out. They never even wanted comfortable stools. They, they didn't want people to like settle in and want to be there all day long. So, so they make it work. What we've, what we've kind of eliminated with the outdoor seating, I think post-COVID and, and prior to COVID, while you were eating, the next group of people would line up right behind you. And, and as soon as a stool got open, they would, they would get in and then they would try to save the next stool. And then there would be the next line of people. And folks definitely aren't comfortable with people being in their personal space right behind them where they're eating anymore. So the, they, they kind of self-regulate that themselves. And, and if there's a group of two and there's two stools, but you need three, people just start moving around to fit people in.
But we're talking about capacity. Those stools were, they must be 12 inches wide. They weren't backed, they're backed up right next to each other. That doesn't mean that there's room for people to sit down and eat.
And yet, Ms. King, they have for 75 years.
Not like that.
Yes, they have.
I've been here for a really long time and I'm telling you, it wasn't packed in that tight.
Difference of opinion.
That's true.
Eileen, my question regarding the bike rack is, and I was telling you out there, is one possible solution to reduce the outdoor seating and buy, let's say, four and move, put those four additional seats inside and have more room for a bike rack outside?
Mr. Halpern, you just heard Ms. King question the number of seats I already have inside. We're, we're, we are taking it down. And now you're trying to give me an answer for the bicycle by moving more seats inside. I think what, what we're here tonight trying to do is just look at that number of 72 and, and trust us as reasonable business owners that we will do our best to address the bike issue. And, and we're not expanding the use of the building. That number 72 has been pre-existing.
I only mentioned that because originally what we saw was 32 inside seats and now it's 24.
And, and 32 is tight inside. So I think, you know, out of. And, and 32 is tight inside. So I think, you know, out of knowing that we were not going to be favored asking for 78 seats, we, you know, in, in somewhere in, as we've been processing, we have gone down six already.
Are you, are you talking 72 seats total inside and outside?
Yeah.
Yes.
So you have 80 on the drawing.
Right.
There are 32 in, 48 out.
Right.
Where's 70 common problems?
Because we, we amended that, that from the outset. Since we submitted the revised plan, we talked it over and thought it was best to keep it to a number that was consistent with the prior seating at, at, at the, at the site as a whole, which was 72. So that's why we reduced it.
And, and the other.
So. Get 32 in there if you had to on a rainy day.
Exactly. Or, or maybe even more. I don't know.
Four in there to get you the.
Right. So 72 is the total number. Outside cannot exceed 48. Whatever happens inside is whatever they can accommodate as long as they're not exceeding the capacity.
I would tend to agree. I don't think anybody's concerned about how many people you can get inside. I think the concern is how many seats i- i- if we're jamming them in outside? Because that's really what impacts the neighborhood. That's, and that's parking. And that's what happened with Tucker's. So yeah, that's what we're looking at. You're right. We don't care.
But if there's people waiting to eat, they're either driving or biking there too. So.
Questioning whether or not the restaurant's a great place to eat.
I, and I'm not.
I think we're all uncomfortable about the amount of people that are congregated in that one area.
And, and yet that number of people have been congregated in that area since approximately 2011 with the outdoor seating. Because there were 47, there were 20, there were 47 seats indoors and 24 seats outdoors since 2011.
How many were that outdoors? 24?
24.
Now we're looking to double that number. And that's what, that's what the board is concerned about.
That's what we're.
What they're not concerned about was indoors. There was a.
Yeah, somehow.
Right.
Guys weren't in there. And the Fire Marshal has a problem with that.
Well, but, but in the neighborhood, we're getting a chance to speak. But again, when the town was, and look, this has been somewhat confusing because even part of the issue is when the town would sign off on these outdoor dining permits, 20, 20, 21, 22, they count a picnic table as four to six. So I guess when you really favor someone, the picnic table is four. And then when you're concerned about numbers, the number is six. And yet, in all honesty, because there's nothing worse than the truth, sometimes a picnic table has nine or 10. You know, because sometimes there's three little kids and six adults. So, and that is, that is the only reason that we've stayed with some of the picnic tables is that we do find the patrons that have small children favor the picnic tables. It's easier with the grandkids and the younger ones to be at a picnic table versus the chairs. And yet we do have high chairs. One, one other thing, and this is important, I think. All of those other seating plans, every single year, those tables were approved in the buffer on the property line. And there were never any complaints to the police department. There were no noise complaints. And there were eight picnic tables when we purchased. And, and we decreased down to the four because the eight, the eight meant that there could be 64 people at those tables. And that was too many. We were very mindful of that. I think, you know, the, the 48 and the, the fact that it's been 72, whether they were inside or outside, if you're speaking on things like parking and bicycles, that number kind of remains the same.
The first thing I'd like to say, I think during COVID, I think everybody in the community got together and they didn't complain about this and that. They all were together. So where the seats were then doesn't necessarily mean where they should be.
Right.
So I think that's out of the question. Um, the other part is uh, Mr. Little's telling us in 2013, you know, he counted three tables and 12 seats and 17, three tables and 15 seats. And 18, 2018, three tables and 13 seats. So in my mind, we're going from, from somewhere from 12 to 15 seats. And I think that shows in the pictures that you submitted to us. There seems to be three umbrellas and there seems to be you know, three tables and however many seats there were, that's really what was there. So we're, in my mind, we're talking about, that's the increase. And the other, another question I have really for Frank is, on Delaware Avenue, there's no sidewalk. From a safety standpoint, because, you know, the other day when I was walking around town, just trying to figure out, I took a couple passes through there and there is no safe way to walk on that side of the street.
That's one of the. Probably no parking on that side of the street.
Yeah. There was cars parked. So you couldn't, it's like, you couldn't even uh, edge up there. So I didn't even realize that was no parking on that side. So where, where does, where do we start where we have in other areas where we need sidewalks and we have to start somewhere?
I mean, certainly it could require sidewalks as a condition of approval, but it's so tight there.
I understand that, but.
With the trash enclosure and everything.
It's going to be an exception if we decide to start doing sidewalks all the way down Delaware Avenue. That's, that's what I'm saying. All of a sudden you'll have sidewalks along Delaware. And there are some sidewalks along Delaware. Um, you're just not going to have them.
That's a tough call. I guess we have to get back to the number of seats. I mean, I'm looking at the plan. If you, if you took the one four-top out.
You're guilty too.
If you, um, I, I, on the drawing, on the Delaware Avenue side, there's a four-top. If you took that out and put a bike rack there, that would work. And, and you know, I think you might have to lose eight, eight seats here and get back to 40. You could also take the picnic table, the six-top picnic table that's kind of angled on the west side and move that around to the front. And move it away and get another bike rack in there too.
When you say around to the front, do you mean Delaware Avenue?
Yeah, no, I mean. The six-top that's closer to, I guess, the house on the west that's on an angle? Could move that around to the front on Center Street where the wording says 48 outdoor dining seats. Get another bike rack in there. Get one on this other side.
Yeah.
That's where there is a bike rack.
Yeah, and you could.
Behind that six-top, that's where we sat. And that bike rack was so small, like 15 bikes were just.
Well, I mean, that bike rack, if it's there, is it on this plan?
No.
It's not shown.
No.
Right.
But it, well, there was one there.
So.
A small one.
So I'm just saying there's, you know, I, I, I think the board has to determine the number of seats we're going to deal with ultimately because it's going to go with the property. As, as Robin mentioned, it's, it's, you know, if tomorrow, or I think Tommy mentioned, if tomorrow goes.
Is there a requirement for bike racks?
No, there isn't.
It's just a safety.
That end up out in the sidewalk and, and then, I mean, you guys should probably police them.
But there is a requirement for parking. So I think in lieu of.
Yeah.
People are, in the community are riding bikes. They are walking. So we need to make a combination.
I mean, you've seen Fantasy Island's got bike racks wrapped around it. There's so many people that ride their bikes then. You know what I mean?
And yet I'm thinking, I, and I don't want to name other restaurants, but there are some restaurants that don't have a bike rack. Right. In the business district even. On the main road maybe, yeah. Right.
Anyone else have anything?
Yes, one general question. Could the buffer be extended all the way to the sidewalk? Would that help the neighbors? I don't know.
That's where the one bike rack is, I believe. Um, and the one that Mr. Little referenced, it's not on the plan. The original photographs that we submitted with the application shows the, the existing bike rack. So I, I think that's in the area where you're proposing to extend the buffer.
Towards Center Street.
Frank, we can, we can um, put a stipulation in here too for uh, we, we did it with um, the Dock and Claw for a two-year review for the, you know, have a.
I don't, I mean, I would rather have you nail it down tonight, get the number of seats you want.
Oh, I'd like to have it nailed down, but I'd also think I'd like to have it so that we can review.
A two-year review. I think they're here for a site plan. If we're going to give them an approval, let's give them an approval and that's it. I want to do this two years from now.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's get it over with now. I'm sorry. I said, let's get it over with now and. Yeah, she's going to hit me with that thing. Let's get it over with now and get, get an approval that we can live with and move on.
I, I'm just, I'm, my concern is, is the, is the perpetuity thing. Like I said, they, they hit the lottery tonight and, you know, next year they, they move away. Somebody else comes in, there's not a good neighbor to the town and, and it's a circus. And they have 48 seats outside.
Wild West or rodeo-ish.
Are we in agreement that we're actually asking for an increase from 15 to 48 on the outside?
It was, it was 24 outside.
With during COVID?
No, before COVID, it was 24.
Before COVID.
So we're doubling it outside.
Actually, what I saw in the 2022, there was 36 outside was, was the approval.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And part of this too is that the world changed, you know, before outdoor dining is a lot more desired than it was before COVID. So to increase the numbers from where they were pre-COVID is, is not surprising. That's sort of the pattern that everybody's doing. I think that's the purpose for introducing the outdoor seating ordinance to begin with. So that's a big part of it.
And, and the third thought would be, there's more people. Right? And, and I think I made this point the last Land use board meeting. We, we used to have little Cape Cod's and, and now we have much bigger beach homes. Four or five people used to come and rent a home and now it's 14 or 15. And, and I think consistently sometimes we're, we're really trying to hold all the restaurants and the businesses to not growing. And yet we've allowed the residences to get a lot bigger. And there aren't enough seats for the people that want to go out to eat. We've lost Fred's, we've lost Angelina's, we've lost Crew Bell's, we lost Dom's, we lost Joey's Pizza. And none of them have been replaced with eateries. You know, most of the places have anywhere from an hour to three-hour wait. And folks are eating later, but we didn't ask to stay open later. We're, we're closing. Our, our last burger is possibly cooked at 5:09. Our patrons are gone by 9:15. Very mindfully, very quietly, we try to be out of the building by 10.
So we're here tonight to resolve the buffer in the rear, the total number of outdoor seating, and the breakfast, not before 8 o'clock. Those are our issues for tonight, correct?
Correct.
And we have not been opening until 8 AM now.
Okay.
And actually, the other one said nine, right?
For certain tables, but since we've relocated the tables from the westerly side of the building there, that's why we're revising that to 8 o'clock start everywhere outside.
But you still have tables on the westerly side of the building.
Right. Not, not along the westerly wall of the building where they were before. But yes, in the southwest corner there of the building, there are still tables, yes.
Anybody else? Any questions? Do we have any, anybody Land use on Zoom? Anyone still on Zoom that had made a question?
Uh, no.
Got to open to the public. Alright.
Uh, wait, do you have any more? You have no more?
No, that, that concludes our witnesses. Thank you.
Alright, yeah.
Motion to open to the public?
Motion to open to the public.
Are you a second or are you?
I'm a second.
Okay. Hold on, I'm sorry. Yeah, so he's, he's an attorney representing.
So we're opening up and we'll let the attorney go first.
Let the attorney, rules of the court, attorney goes first.
We're just trying to work out something on Zoom.
Just so you know that apparently there are people having issues getting on to Zoom. Is that what you're just?
That's exactly what they're trying.
Thank you. Just wanted to make. Okay, just want to make sure you're aware. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen.
We're going to take a quick five-minute recess.
We got here. Alright. So I wonder if we can let them in now.
Yeah, I went through, we went through like Google, like aerial service. That's all they had on YouTube. I know. I know you're eighty. So you throw the you want thirty six? I want from the other side.
No, the other down, the same side.
Yeah. And then here, I don't think there is. Nothing in that box. It's all trees.
Is anybody out in the hallway? You wanna call them back in? All right, for the five hundred participants, it's a dollar a head. You take Venmo. Just kidding. I'll call it back in order. Where did the attorney go? He left. I told him to get his Powerball tickets before. That was your job. You were supposed to go out and round everybody up.
I did.
Brian went to measure the tape. And and I told him to bring it back home.
All right, ready to put the the sheet up? All right, Counselor, go ahead.
My name is Richard Seelahy Jr. I was here at the last meeting. I represent the Hertners who live due west of the applicant's property. Um, I just have one or two questions for Mr. Rosalsky. Mr. Rosalsky, when you rendered the revised plan, um, I note at the bottom of the plan, there is in fact a graphic scale. Is that correct?
Yes.
Utilize that scale in in making the measurements of.
I'm trying my best.
Are you, are you, you utilize that scale in rendering both the building and the setbacks and the buffer zones? Is that correct?
Yes.
Did you utilize that scale when you rendered the tables that are shown on the plan?
Somewhat.
So the tables, in fact, are not drawn to the same scale as the rest of the rendering? Is that your testimony?
Uh, the the size of the tables were estimated and the location of the tables were estimated based on uh, site inspection that I made.
So those tables are not drawn to scale?
Uh, no.
So in fact, when the board member were to look at that, view that plan, they would really have no idea how big those tables are in relation to the building or the setbacks or the sidewalk or the buffer zone. Is that true?
Yes.
That's all I have. If the board would permit, I have brought this evening Mr. Andrew Thomas, who was testified at the last meeting and is going to testify in rebuttal to the newly revised submission of the applicant. With regard to his findings, he's already been accepted by this board as an expert. Would you like him re sworn or should we consider?
Say your name for the record, Cass.
Yes, I see sign. What? Yeah, Andrew Thomas from Thomas Planning Associates.
Mr. Thomas, you solemnly swear firm testimony you're about to give before this court is the truth and whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Mr. Thomas, you had an opportunity to review the revised submission of the applicant. Is that true?
That's correct.
And you, when you did that review, you did so with the knowledge that this would be considered by the board as a devariance. Is that true?
That's true.
Sorry. As a result of reviewing it under the offices of a devariance.
Hang on a second.
There we go.
I know, sorry. Sorry, it's that boring.
We good? Good.
And Mr. Thomas, you had the, uh, as a result of reviewing this under the objectives of both the municipal land use law as a devariance, under what conditions and under what of standard did you make your review?
Yes, so I think it's important to remember that this is a, an expansion of a non-conforming use in the zone. It's also, I'd like to point out again that it's located on an undersized lot in a residential zone. It doesn't meet the setback requirements for the zone. And so the applicant is asking for the expansion of outdoor dining, which does require a devariance, the D two variance.
In addition to your review of the municipal land use law in general, did you have an opportunity to review the specific borough ordinances affecting this particular application?
Yes, I did.
Drawing your attention to section two twelve dash seven of the Beach Haven Borough ordinances, did you have an opportunity to read that ordinance in specifically with regard to this application?
Yes, so I I looked at two twelve dash seven E two. Um, and so Beach Haven has a specific section in the ordinance with regard to non-conforming uses. Um, and I I testified to this at a prior hearing and I just wanted to sort of reiterate, you know, what I had said. And so two twelve dash seven is non-conforming lots, uses and structures. Uh, and it says the lawful use may be continued so long as it remains otherwise lawful, subject to the following provisions. And I'm just gonna read the one that
Applies here.
Yeah, that applies here. And it's number two. It says, any non-conforming use may be extended throughout any parts of a building which were manifestly arranged or designated for such use at the time of the adoption of this chapter. Um, and then it goes on to say, and I think this is the important part, but no such use shall be extended to occupy any land outside such a building. So
In your opinion.
Clearly expanding outside the building.
And in your opinion, that that particular ordinance says you can move things around inside as long as you don't go outside.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Did you review any other ordinances with regard to this application?
Um, of course, uh, so chapter one thirty seven, again, which is the outdoor dining section. Um, and specifically one thirty seven dash three, uh, the expanded outdoor dining area. And it states, and you've heard this before, the total amount of of seats available to patrons shall not exceed the permitted occupancy of the establishment.
So at the time you reviewed it, and now we've heard that they are demuting the uh, uh, application to seventy two seats, but at the time this, at of its submission, this clearly exceeded the number of permitted seats, did it not?
Correct.
Now, with regard to, uh, and we just heard the testimony of the applicant's professional that the picnic tables outside are not drawn to scale. Um, and they could be much larger, in fact, than they are indicated on the plan.
Were smaller.
Possibly, but the way they're set up now, did you make any measurements that best you could based on, uh, with the scale that was given?
I I did.
Position of those tables?
Yes, I did. So engineers use a program called AutoCAD. I have AutoCAD. I loaded this into AutoCAD and I measured, um, the distances specifically between the backs of the chairs on opposite tables and also the back of the chair to the building.
And what did you find as a result of making those measurements?
So you can see that the seats and tables are really jammed together. And there's at least seven points that I, um, looked at and reviewed specifically where the spacing is approximately between three and ten inches between the backs of the chairs.
Why is it important to have more access room between tables generally?
So six inches is is pretty small and and it's not and you heard testimony that the distance between the two tables is about three feet. So why is that important? And I have actually a couple of chairs to show you exactly what six inches looks like. There's there's very little room, you know, between the two chairs. See that here? Three inches, the six inches between these two. Six inches looks like.
Do you feel it's possible that a patron could traverse between that distance?
No, and so I'm thinking about, you know, people getting between the chairs. About people sitting in the chairs, getting up out of their seats or tables, looking with the guy's eye.
What about, what about service providers? Could they, uh, effectively or safely move between that?
It's difficult to maneuver, whether you're a patron, whether you're a server. I think about people and I heard the testimony that, you know, there's people with high chairs or strollers. You have beach bags, you have elderly with, uh, possibly with canes or walkers. So I mean, I I I'm looking at the plan and I'm thinking about the distance between seats at those tables. And from a planning perspective, it's it's a little concerning.
Didn't the borough, in fact, address this very notion in their ordinances?
They did. When they, when they did the outdoor seating ordinance, again, section one thirty seven, and it's it's pretty expansive. There's actually a few instances where it mentions pedestrian access. And it says, um, you're not permitted to restrict pedestrian access. And in a couple of instances, it actually provides a clearance distance. And this is not a covid ordinance. Let's let's be clear about this. This is, this is the ordinance. Um, so one of the first things it says is, uh, under one, one thirty seven dash three, expanded outdoor dining areas. In one of the first sentences of that paragraph, and I'll just again read the
Pertinent part.
The pertinent part. It says, provided that any area proposed for outdoor seating and dining must be accessible from the establishment, shall not obstruct the free flow of pedestrian traffic and shall provide a safe location for the patrons.
In your opinion, does seating that close together, uh, conform with that ordinance?
No.
Does, do the ordinances, in fact, make a much more specific delineation of how much room should exist between tables and outdoor seating?
Yes, it does.
And where does it state that?
So another section, one thirty seven dash five, it says standards for permits. Um, and this is subsection E. And it says a non-enclosed tent, awning or umbrellas, and these seats have umbrellas, may be utilized within an outdoor dining area, okay? Provided that they don't restrict pedestrian access. A six foot minimum pedestrian clearance is required.
And that's, uh, uh, referring to tent awning or umbrellas. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And did you view the site personally?
Yes.
Did the four person tables contain umbrellas? Or do even the six person tables contain?
I I know the four persons do. I know back in twenty thirteen and twenty eighteen, the photographs that I, like, showed you last time, which I have, they have umbrellas. So, yes.
So if a table has an umbrella, it's gotta be six feet from the next table. Isn't that correct?
Correct. The, I think the testimony from the speaker was that the tables are three feet, uh, from one another.
And in fact, I think he suggested that that was a recommended distance based on covid. It is in fact a a mandatory requirement based on the town zone borough ordinances, isn't it?
The six foot distances. That's correct.
Was, is that six foot, uh, distance, uh, mentioned anywhere else in the borough's ordinances?
Uh, one, one other section, one thirty seven dash two. It says clearances and distance between tables, between tables and between the seating area of any curb. Uh, in parentheses, it has six foot minimum pedestrian clearance is required.
So that's two, two instances in the borough's old ordinance is where it requires six foot distance between tables.
So they're looking at at the area between the curb line um, to the seating area and also between tables.
Now, you presented at your last testimony some renderings based on, uh, uh, Google Maps. Is that true?
That's correct.
Do you remember what we marked those?
This was more oh four.
That's correct. This is oh four. This is from July of twenty eighteen. Um, and then you can see from the street that there are three tables with three umbrellas. Um, total, it looks like a total of twelve seats. And what's proposed in that same area right now along the front is seven sets of tables and chairs for a total of thirty two seats. So you're you're adding twenty more seats just to the front of the building. And I know Mr. Stevens mentioned that in one of his comments, you know, what are we, what are we looking at? What's the the differential? Well, not only from twenty eighteen, but also in twenty thirteen, it shows similar outdoor seating. Um, and now you're being bumped up to at least thirty two seats within that particular area.
Is it your opinion, Ms. Thomas, that, uh, it would be in fact impossible to fit the tables, uh, that are proposed in the area where they're proposed without violation of these other two borough ordinances?
Um, that's correct. You you'd have to, you know, expand the distance between the tables in order to to meet the the borough ordinance.
Where is the only place for expansion as shown on that picture?
So right now, the place for expansion would be, I guess, along the the western.
Into the buffer zone that was agreed on.
Property, yeah.
Onto the sidewalk. Isn't that true?
We're onto the sidewalk, correct. And and right now, if you look at this particular picture and it's hard to to judge the distance between the tables, but it does look like there's at least six to ten inches between the backs of the chairs. I, and I would guess there's probably a, almost a six foot table separation. Um, so back then they had the, it seems that they had the proper table separation. But now it's 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 much closer.
Uh, in addition to reviewing the seating land, did you have an opportunity to review the proposed buffer area?
Yes, I did.
And do you have any comments with regard to the, how it's been proposed?
So speaking of the buffer area, there's, there's twenty trees, uh, proposed. I heard that some testimony that that would possibly be expanded towards the parking area and then also towards the back corner. There's nothing defining the limits of the buffer area. Um, there's no, again, there's no buffer area along the north sides of the property and northwest corner. Um, and there's also nothing to define the limit of the outdoor seating area either, which is required under the ordinance. And it states under subsection one thirty seven dash five L of the outdoor seating section. It says that planters, posts and ropes, wrought wrought iron railings and other removable enclosures are are encouraged and shall be a way of defining the area occupied the outdoor dining area. And this site plan doesn't do that.
Uh, in fact, there's no indication of where the outdoor seating area, other than the lines run on the plan, which we have to rely on the patrons to adhere to. There's nothing that indicates where the buffer ends and where the seating area begins. Isn't that true?
That's correct. And and so I guess the concern is that, yes, you're planting trees within the buffer area. But there's still, you know, when you plant them early on, there's still a distance that you could actually encroach in into the buffer. So it's not well defined.
Uh, viewing this as, uh, uh, you have under the, uh, devariance criteria as enunciated in the municipal land use law, do you draw any conclusions as to whether or not this particular application satisfies the positive and negative criteria that this board must consider uh, in in, uh, deciding on this application?
Yeah, so this is a pre-existing non-conforming use, D two use variance is required and the applicant. Yeah, so this is a pre-existing non-conforming use, D2 use variance is required, and the applicant has to demonstrate special reasons. Both the positive and negative criteria. The, and variance relief should only be granted in those unusual circumstances that would serve the general welfare and not impair the purposes and intent of the zoning regulations. And the proposed site plan is not consistent, in my opinion, nor does it enhance the existing neighborhood or meet applicable purposes of the municipal land use law. And there's a number of purposes in, under the MLUL, there's 17 total. Not all of them are applicable or relevant to this.
With regard to the, the positive, what we call the positive criteria, did you delineate those that you felt apply here and whether or not this application satisfied them?
So the ones that I think apply would be purpose C, providing adequate light air and open space. I don't think it does that. I don't think there's enough space between the chairs and tables. It doesn't conform with the ordinance requirement that I, I read that, which says, you know, you shouldn't extend or occupy land outside the building. So it doesn't meet that purpose, doesn't meet purpose A. Purpose A is encouraging or guiding the appropriate use or development in a manner that would promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. Again, for the purposes that I previously stated it. And then lastly, purpose I, promoting a desirable visual environment. I don't think adding.
Mr. Thomas, there's no eating in here? So if I were a judge up here, it'd help hold you all in contempt? I'm sorry, go ahead, continue.
So, yeah, and purpose I, promoting desirable visual environment, I don't think adding seats and tables necessarily promotes a desirable visual environment and it benefits the applicant, but not so much the residential neighborhood in itself. And I think with respect to the 10-foot buffer, that's a requirement that you have to do anyway between the commercial and residential uses. So it's, it's one of those things that you, it has to be planted.
With regard to the negative criteria, did you have an opportunity to evaluate the negative criteria and whether this application complies with those?
So the expansion of the outdoor seating has and will continue to have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood, particularly the adjacent residential houses. And my, my client in particular to the west. The application, application is substantially detrimental to the zoning ordinance, in my opinion, for the, the reasons that I, I'd stated with regard into the expansion of the pre-existing non-conforming use. So in my opinion, the negative criteria hasn't, hasn't been met.
Okay, that's all I have of this witness. Is there any?
Mr. Thomas, you've obviously done a great deal of calculating and measuring.
Yes.
In your opinion, what's the number of seating that that outside can, could occupy?
So here's, here's the problem. The problem is, is that based on the way this seating is now, it's approximately three to four feet between tables. If you approve 48 outdoors seats and, and tables, there's going to be a migration, you know, you, you, you're going to have a, it, it's going to expand so that there's, you know, people can get in to and around the seat. So, you know, and it's going to probably expand not only towards the the sidewalk, but also probably will go up against the western portion of the building. So.
So given the area that you, that, that's in question, the area is that, that's inhabitable, so to speak, without going into the buffer, without going further to the westerly side of the building, looking at all the easterly side on Delaware, every inch of space out there, how many seats do you think you could put out there?
Well, now, again, I'm looking at the aerial from 2018 and then 2013. So they have three.
I want a crystal ball. I want you to give me a crystal ball.
I, I didn't do that calculation.
Looking at crystal balls here on the day.
I, 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 I'm going to be honest, I didn't do the calculation of, of how many there should be. I know that this plan doesn't conform with the ordinance. If you want me to go back and do that and, and give you a number, I can do that.
Can you ballpark me? I mean, you've done a great deal of.
Mr. Meadow, I think Mr. Thomas's testimony is not to present how many seats he believes. It's not his application. That wasn't how he prepared to do this. It's, right, I, I would object to the question.
Objection, system.
Let me ask it this way, Mr. Thomas, is there any other way to combine? Is there any other way to combine more with, without removing those tables? I mean, you have to remove some tables.
You have to remove some tables. It's, I think that's what you have to do. Now, how many do you have to remove? I'm not, I'm not sure. Is it three? Is it four? It's going to be some, some number of tables that have to be removed in order to preserve, you know, the western property line, preserve the buffer. And, and so that they don't migrate into the sidewalk and, and other areas.
Thank you. Anyone have any other questions?
What I see there is, I'll be, what I see there is, I see three umbrellas in that picture, which to me must be 12 seats. I see the stoned area, which is, I would assume is the seating area. And between the stone and the sidewalk, doesn't look like a lot of area. I can't see real well from back here. So the question is, is staggering the tables in some way, you might get a few more in, but you're not going to get these numbers we're talking about. The other thing, the other thing I noticed, which is a little off subject, is I don't see those string lights in that picture, which is 2018. So it seems like those string lights were put in there during the period of COVID. You know, so that there was lighting.
Well, you don't see anything along the western buffer at all. It's wide open. You don't see any lighting, you don't see any seating, surfboards, that type of thing.
Tom, can your question be presented to them as a designer? I mean, have you guys met code 137?
I can speak to that. That was one of the questions I was going to have for Mr. Thomas. I think the, the testimony regarding section 137, chapter 137 is misguided because the, the, my understanding, Mr. Thomas, under section 137-8, one of the requirements in order to, to have outdoor seating approved under the outdoor seating ordinance is that you have a prior site plan application on file with the borough, which the applicant here does not. So the applicant wouldn't be able to apply for outdoor seating under this ordinance. And then under section 137-8C, it states if any of the conditions listed above cannot be met, that's referring to entire chapter 137. Or if the applicant does not agree with the determination made by the borough manager or his or her designee, the applicant shall make an application to the land use board for site plan approval. So I just wanted to make clear to the board, there's nothing in section 137 that prevents an applicant from applying to the board for site plan approval, correct?
That's why we're here. That's right. We, we, we don't have a site plan approval on the books. So we have to have something to base, base it on. And in addition to that, it's an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use. So it's, it's kind of a dual thing. Thank you.
That's all the witnesses I have on behalf of the objector at this point.
Thank you. Anyone from the public? Mr. Cap?
Are these for questions of the expert?
No, I'm sorry, the, the.
Questions first?
I'm sorry.
Again, I'm sorry. If I could just interject with one other thing. If the board is inclined and the, the objector's attorney is inclined, we did have somebody that went and measured the tables during our break who's willing to testify regarding the measurements, if that's something the board is open to. And I guess he could testify as a member of the public, but I just wanted to, to throw that out.
The only thing I would ask is, how do we then make it relevant to the plan that the board must review? In other words, they've got to have some sense of relevance. How much are they not to scale?
I mean, he would just testify regarding the measurements.
That's, that's, that's the error of doing it, some to scale, some not.
I do have one last question. Mr. Thomas, did anywhere on the plans you have an opportunity to make any observation regarding fulfillment, fulfillment of ADA requirements with regard to this application?
I didn't see that on the plan and I didn't hear anything in testimony about the ADA requirements.
And is it your understanding that ADA requirements are a choice or are they in fact a federal requirement?
They are a federal requirement and I, I can't speak any more than, than that. I'm not an expert in ADA.
That's all I have.
Going once. Twice. Anyone in the public want to ask the?
Chris Cap. My legal domicile is 805 Third Street, Key West, Florida. But I'm a third-generation islander and still have a summer home here. Pardon me?
Do you raise your right hand?
Sure.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth and will truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, go ahead.
Several points I'd like to make, and I'll try and synopsize it as best I can because it's past my bedtime. I'm 72 years old. And I promise I won't argue whether six inches is a lot or not. But most recent conversation seems to be over the size of the tables. If, it would seem to me that if the borough and the fire department has already determined the legal and safe number of tables and people to be occupying the place, that should override almost everything else. Regarding the bicycle and bicycle rack situation, I would think since bicycles are required to adhere to motor vehicle laws today, that should be left up to the police department. Maybe they should eliminate a parking space or two and put in bicycle racks there. Also help eliminate some of the cars, hopefully. It's, I've been a longtime patron. I'm not friends with these guys. I've met them, obviously, because they're the new owners. But I've been a longtime patron of the Holiday Snack Bar. I think that the alfresca dining enhances the ambiance of the borough. It's nice to see outside dining in the summertime everywhere. I also managed a bar and restaurant, 280-seat restaurant bar in Florida for 17 years. We stopped dining, I, I managed the restaurant area, but I also handled the liquor too. It was a full liquor bar, so people generally have a tendency to stick around longer when they're drinking. There's no drinking going on here, except that maybe someone brings a bottle of wine that's probably still legal here in New Jersey. But we would get people out, like someone else testified, maybe the owner. As soon as we stopped serving, as soon as you can't get a meal anymore, within 15, 20 minutes, the dining room was empty. So one last comment I'd make to make, like to make, I don't, no offense to the next-door neighbors, but the home that I own in Key West is within a mile or two of the US naval base down there. And I periodically and occasionally have F-15, F-18 fighter jets fly over my house. If I was concerned about noise, jet noise, I wouldn't have purchased a home where there was going to be jet noise. Simple as that. That's all I have to say. Thank you for listening to me and taking, letting me take your time.
Sue Sharkey, 10 North Delaware.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth and will truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I respect and thank you guys for serving. I, I like rules. I like, I like to stay in my lane. I also respect my, my neighbors, the Harkners, for being passionate about their own property. And I'm going to say a couple of observations. Couple of observations, this has become very adversarial. I, I certainly respect you protecting the neighborhood and the rules and all that kind of thing. The neighbors did try to mediate and come to some, some agreements to no avail. I'm glad I'm not on Facebook or any social media because I know that blows up. So thank goodness I'm, I'm free of that. The observations that I, I would like to make or offer is that the previous, so I live, I'm the other neighbor, I'm on the north. And the previous owners, great people, great business, more of a passive kind of business model. The current owners, the bokers, lively, fun, want a lot of business. They also probably have to pay a lot of bills, so they need more business. I certainly want restaurants and businesses to thrive in Beach Haven. I very much encourage more places to eat. I think of all the businesses, the restaurant business is probably the hardest. I would never want to be in that. With the exception, Compassion Cafe doesn't count. There's an exclusion there. The observations I think that I want to make is that in this time that we've gone from a passive business owner to more of a lively spirited one, the neighborhood has not been negatively affected. An observation is that the Harkners raised their house because of Sandy insurance, I get that. Their view is a little bit different. Along came the decoration that is a little whimsical, a surfboard in the tree. You know, I don't know. It's just different and, and different hurts. I understand that. I get it. Some other observations, we keep talking about that buffer zone. We used to own right next to Tucker's. And I know when you live next to a business, you're allowed, or they, you could ask them to build an eight-foot fence instead of a six-foot fence, like the rest of us have to comply by, or is it five foot? I don't know. I wondered if maybe an eight-foot fence could be a requirement. I do want to protect the trees. Jim, I know you have a concern about that, the arborvitae is going, being continued. The trees that are there, you, you referred to them as evergreens. I think one of them is a local cedar tree, and I, I just really want to protect those two very old trees. And I worry, you know, there's not, it's a tight space. As soon as you put those big arborvitae in, they might squeeze out the good local, sorry. I'll come back. I'll come back. It's unbelievable that an immediate neighbor with skin in the game can't talk longer than three months. I'll come back.
Anyone else? She's not a professional. That's the, the reason why that person was given that time was a professional.
She can come back up again.
Yeah.
These are the rules.
Hi, please. My name is Jack Linsalotto. I live at 329 Dock Road. I've been there for eight.
Do you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth and will truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Okay, I've lived for 18 years. Actually, I would be almost, I guess the Holiday Snack Bar is on Delaware and Center Street. And I would be Catty Corner on Delaware and Dock Road. I asked where I lived for eight years. And then for 17 years after, I've lived in the property next to it, behind it, at 329 Dock Road. First, I went on 1 North Delaware Avenue. Anyway, I just wanted to note a few things, that there's never been any type of a speaker system where I've heard any kind of a noise coming from the Holiday Snack Bar, where they announced, you know, if the food was ready. Where I live, I am further away from some of the businesses in the business zone, and I can hear them announce when tables are ready. I have heard that through the years from my residents. The Holiday Snack Bar closes at 9:00 PM. They're very quiet as they leave where I live on Dock Road. And I've heard from many different neighbors going up and down Dock Road, going up and down Second Street, Center Street through the year. My five and more, all the way down on Norwood, have been affected by different people coming out of the bars late at night. There are properties that have been affected also, and we don't see any of that coming from the snack bar. The expert said that the neighborhood was perhaps affected negatively by the, by the snack bar putting in many outside tables. As far as I understand, there's been one neighbor that's complained. That's only as far as what I understand. From any, anybody else I spoke with, nobody else has been bothered. I know I for sure have not been bothered by the way that they have made it look. It looks better than it has in 25 years. And again, I think that that's good that they pointed out about the bike rack. Perhaps the town, you know, there might be, you know, I don't know if they're responsible at all for putting a bike rack anywhere. Perhaps the town, you know, there might be, you know, I don't know if they're responsible at all for putting a bike rack anywhere near there. One other thing I want to point out about there's being six feet between tables. I know we owned a restaurant in Beach Haven for twenty-eight years. That's six feet between tables. I don't see it in other tables that are outside in Beach Haven. I know we didn't do it, so I'm not, I'm not sure if that's true. Thank you.
Sue Sharkey. Thank you. Ten North Delaware Avenue, Beach Haven, to be continued. So again, on the, the owner, my husband back there and I are the owners of the property to the north. I think I ended on the arborvitae and protecting the trees that, you know, we don't have enough of and, and those of us that have the trees need to protect them. About the bike, Penny, I totally agree. I really applaud the people that ride their bikes. I'm somebody that I don't go north of New Jersey Avenue because I have to go pick up stuff for Compassion Cafe. That's the only time I, I ride my car. I'm on the bike most of the time. I think, I think good signage, I don't, you know, I told my, you can't park the sidewalk, period. I wondered if the parking lots immediately, the, to the, the east, maybe we could dedicate the southerly most one to a bike rack, just like we have those big bike racks at the beach entrances. That might alleviate a lot in the area. It's a very active area. It really is. So just an idea, it might, it might be a good balance of, and I know we're always worried about parking spaces, but I really encourage people to bike, so I'm, I'm speaking for the bikers. The last thing I really want to speak on is the shed. I'm really kind of concerned about this. Again, whether the shed is on my property line or three inches off or six inches off, not my concern at all. My concern would be if you force them to get rid of the shed. I know if I had to keep my stuff out, I would get Tupperware containers and stack them up and that I, that would not be a sightly thing at all. So I think the shed, we all have sheds, it hides our ills, it hides our storage, our Christmas storage or whatever it is. And so I hope that that's not in, in being threatened of being, you know, if you want to do this, you have to get rid of your shed. Well, what are they going to do with their stuff? You know what I mean? It would just be left out in temporary storage. So I'm really protecting the shed also. And honestly, there isn't anywhere else to move it. You know, if I could, I'd move it halfway to my yard, but. So those are my concerns. The trees, maybe a fence, protect the, the trees, not so much the arborvitae. Maybe a taller fence. I do want to say that the noise and, and light pollution is negligible if any. We're so cheap, our, our string lights are on a timer. You know, I, whether yours go off or not, I don't know. They don't, they don't bother me. But I think that's really, and again, through, through the chair, I did invite you all to come to our property at any time and sit there on, on our little couch and listen and, and hear what you hear and it's, it's, it's a good business. And I do appreciate the hours at eight to nine. I wouldn't want it, you know, extend it any later. Thank you. Lois Yuhaus, four one four Midland Avenue, Pine Beach.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth and whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I want to say that the issue of noise seems to be where all of this started. So all of the things relating to the site plan, the tables, all of this is an outcome of that. And it's interesting that the term rowdy came up last time. And I think rowdy is those two AM people coming out of the bars, not kids just outside having breakfast or having lunch. And an interesting thing came up this week. People were asking if the new fan was making all the noise. And it turned out the noise is coming from the Harkner's air conditioner. People sitting at tables are asking about that. The idea that if the holiday was not there, that it would be quiet, I think is something to look at. If a family owned that home with little kids who went out to play at seven AM, it would be a lot noisier than people outside having breakfast. So I think if you put that in perspective, it really becomes a non-issue. The houses grew, there's more people, people are hungry, they love outdoor dining. And I think that it's something that has to be looked at and worked out. I thought the idea of the parking spaces, one perhaps being taken for bikes or bikes in a parking area is a great idea. I think the Bokers have bent over backwards to open up that buffer zone. And the shed certainly is part of the buffer if it can be left. The other thing is when the air conditioner is running, people are inside with the windows closed. They are not listening to any sounds outside. I spoke to someone who has been on a land use board for years and years. Actually, a couple of people who have served on land use boards. And their feeling is that this is a little bit like the people who buy near an airport and complain about the noise. People who buy by a church and don't like the bells ringing in the morning on Sunday because it could wake them up. And I think it's the same type of issue. It is outdoor dining. It's part of the culture now and I think it has to be accepted. And when I mentioned this whole issue to people on land use boards, their attitude, they never addressed the issues. What their comment was, was they can sell the house and for a lot more money than they paid for it. So that could be the bottom line. I thank you. I thank you for your patience and I just hope all of you take that home to your families because I think you've been great. Thank you.
Please, I just wanted to say, I guess, two other things. Please, again, my name is Jaclyn Zalato at three twenty-nine Dock Road. I just wanted to add again regarding handicap seating. I don't know if they're, I don't believe, know that they have to have it because that they're an older building, but if a person is handicapped, it is easier for them to get to a table outside to sit or perhaps to be brought in, in a wheelchair. I'd like to point that out. And I'd also like to point out that the tables that are on Delaware Avenue, there was a question as to whether or not they were too close to the street. Again, my sliding glass door in my kitchen, my deck, I look straight at the Holiday Snack Bar all day long. And my sliding glass doors open all day long. And as far as what I see anyway, those tables are posted very far back from the street. That's, would not be a concern of mine.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience?
My name is Scott Bowden, three zero two in Crest Court in Millstone, but I also own five East Twenty-Ninth Street in Long Beach Township.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth and whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Just want to start off by saying the very first house that I bought was three houses away from the northeast corridor. Trains zooming up and down all day long and I would have never went to somebody and complained about that. I bought it, I knew it. And if I wasn't happy, shame on me. It's the same kind of thing when all these people bought houses by Raceway Park. And all of a sudden it was Raceway Park's fault and they went after them. But anyway, you asked about how it's determined about occupancy. Occupancy is governed by the National Fire Safety Code. The fire official takes into account the number of chairs because somebody was asking about the stools that were in there. That's built into the occupancy, the counter surfaces, the egress and all those things. So that's how they come up with that number. I know that because I've been a firefighter for forty years and I'm also a fire inspector. Second of all, there's a difference between patron path, traffic and pedestrian traffic. So yes, there might be something in your code about that. When it comes to outside dining, there's a difference between patron path, traffic and pedestrian traffic. So you also have to take that into account also. Also, the fact that the place has been there for a very, very long time and had seating outside before. The fact that at any given time, you're coming in here with Google Maps and things like that. Those pictures were taken in twenty eighteen and that's just a snapshot in time. To then come in and use that as evidence as to, well, this is what happened in twenty eighteen and they didn't have string weights up there. Well, what happened between the time? Can you tell me what happened the day after that picture was taken? Anytime we tried to submit those kinds of things, it was usually thrown out of court. Saying, well, when was it taken? Why wasn't it taken more previous? And can you show me a time lapse of time of when things progressed? I feel as though that they're trying to, you know, maintain their business and they're trying to put outside seating. And I understand how you feel about the bike racks and things like that. But the fact that you want to possibly take away a table for bike rack parking, first of all, how many bikes are there a day? Nobody knows, right? So how many bike racks are enough? Second of all, you can't really use that anyway because there's not an ordinance that governs that. So for you to use that as a tangible evidence as to why you either say yes or no, you can't do that. There's no ordinance that says you should do that. That kind of goes against what could actually be, you'd be very in place to go to the township and say, can we have a spot? Maybe we can dedicate a spot because we've seen an issue, we've seen a problem. Okay, thank you.
Yes, we have one person coming in.
Leo Ginsberg.
Leo Ginsberg, fifty-five eleven West Avenue.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth and whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. So I just want to start off here going about a few things that the attorney said about the outside tables. One of the things he was harping on was that there wasn't room for pedestrian traffic between seats. But for those specific seats that he was talking about, the only way that you can go through there takes you to a wall on the outside of the building. So I'm not really sure what pedestrian traffic would be there. There's no room that walks in between that space. Also, those seats are, no offense to Mr. Zansky, those seats are drawn a lot bigger in the picture than they are actually in real life. I've eaten there many a times. I used to work there. Those seats are drawn huge. So I, I'm hoping somebody took a measurement because they're definitely a little off. I also heard a lot being talked about, about twenty thirteen and twenty eighteen, which is before COVID firstly, so it was a completely different time. Additionally, if you look at the stats on the island just for Beach Haven for the year, this is just year round residence. It's growing by two percent every year since twenty twenty. So there's a lot more people coming down here just as permanent residents. And I assume that that also counts for the summer as well, where we already get around a hundred fifty thousand, two hundred thousand people a year. So I, my point that I'm trying to make here is the guy on the board made a very good point in the beginning saying, you know, when you think about the future, it's not just about Holiday Snack Bar. And I completely agree with that. The island's changing, it's growing. There's a lot more people down here than there used to be. And we don't really want to get into the habit here of overreach, you know, stymying small business down here because really that's where, you know, the island gets its monies from, small business. So I just, you know, that would be my, my best piece of advice was the, don't set a precedent of, you know, shutting down these businesses as the islands grow and how they're going to grow with it. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, allowing the person to come up and continually use their three minutes violates the three minute rule.
Well, we did say, I mean, if no one else is coming in, it's okay if they haven't.
I didn't take my three minutes and this is quick. Just Mrs. Edels, she mentioned the seating. And I know what you're talking about. We were just there before we came over. People move the seats. If those seats are where the Bokers place them, they are appropriately placed. But people pull a whole bunch together and then another side is very empty. So that really isn't an issue of them not being appropriate, but I understand what you saw.
Could you just state your name and address?
Lois Yuhaus, four one four Midland Avenue, Pine Beach, New Jersey. Haven't moved.
So, so you understand this is a recording, so when she goes back and does the transcript?
I do. I do. Thank you. Yes, I've done that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Public, come. Mr. Hudson.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I appreciate that. This is a much bigger.
Can you just?
Nope, sorry about that.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth and whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Bill Hudson. Bill Hudson, Beach Haven Inlet, Holgate. This is a much bigger issue than Mr. Harkner. Mr. Harkner and his wife are the only complainants that we know of causing these complaints. Now, we're talking about Fred's Diner's gone, two hundred and forty seats. We're talking about Kubel Two's gone, two hundred seats. We're talking about, what else we have, Dom's is gone. We have Joey's Pizza gone and a number of others. We're probably close to eight hundred seats gone. We've replaced just a few things since then. She's asking for a few seats. The code one thirty-seven three says she can have what the occupancy says. The occupancy says she can have seventy-one seats and those are outside on the extended dining. She's only asking for forty-eight. Okay? And since Mr. Harkner is going to be such a good neighbor next door, we're going to talk about him.
This is not about Harkner.
This is about this, this, this is about the complaint he made in court, which is part of this hearing, Tommy.
This hearing's not in court right now.
It's not.
Okay.
This is, this is about their site plan review and us approving.
Okay, okay. Well, I've been at, I've been at this restaurant many, many, many times. Okay? And every time I've been here, been there, there's no rowdiness, there's no smoking. And the attorney said that they had a drinking alcoholic beverages. That in fact is not true. Beach Haven has allowed a mobile bar by your, by your permits. I'm sure you guys know that. And this mobile bar was hired to come over there to do an event, had nothing to do with Eileen inviting them or allowing them to drink. Beach Haven gave them the permit.
No, they didn't.
How did they, how did the mobile bar get the permit?
We didn't. We found out after the fact, actually.
Okay. Anyway, the police came and they had no problems with the event and there was no tickets given. Just, just, just to let you know.
To, to be clear, just to let you know, the officer that was on duty that day was unaware of what the situation was.
Okay.
Had it been a more senior officer, somebody would have gotten written a summons, not necessarily the Bokers because it was a private party.
I, I think that's the point I'm trying to make. As the Bokers did, it's, it's not their, it's not their bar and it's not their affairs. The point I'm trying to make, I'm not trying to argue, I'm probably, I'm probably agreeing with you that she, that they had nothing to do with it. But I think the point is we're missing so many seats and are asking for just a few seats. Okay? And there's only one complaint and yet there's six hundred, eight hundred people can't get dinner for, within an hour and three hours. So I'm asking you to give them the seats and whatever else we can do for this business. There's so many people that, that really like this business. And there's three neighbors here testifying that this is a good business next to them and around them. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Anyone else?
Mike Ward, four oh eight Center Street.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth and whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I certainly do. Yes, I do. I've been a second home property owner in Beach Haven since nineteen ninety-nine. I live at four oh eight Center Street, which is diagonally, like right next to Doug and Karen Tate, diagonally right across from the Holiday Snack Bar. Now, I have never seen a business that has been more conducive to the family atmosphere that we want to have in Beach Haven. The Holiday Snack Bar has been for the twenty-four years that I've been a property owner in town. I wanted to say tonight that the people that I've come in contact with have been gentle people, have been congenial people, have been civil people. We don't see problems there. We don't see people misbehaving. We see lights that go. We see lights that go out very, very early in the evening as opposed to a lot of other businesses. But I think the most important thing here is that you are charged with basically dealing with the standards under our municipal land use law. And the fact of the matter is that there are a lot of special reasons that are promoted under the municipal land use law that would allow the reasonable variances they're seeking tonight. Under NJSA 40,55D-2, the special reasons, the sections of the code, the sections of the statute talk about things like promoting historical uses, historical businesses, appropriate densities in it. I agree with you, sir. Somebody should put scales picnic tables on the plan, but they can do that. Picnic tables are generally three feet by five and a half, three feet by six feet long. I agree with you, they should be there. Because that way you can basically say, here's the area we're going to allow them. But when we're talking about six or eight tables total, we're talking about almost 15, 20 feet, well, 15 feet to the, to the sidewalk, not the curb. Hey, what I've seen there with the tables that have been there over the last few months, they fit very nicely. I think tonight you guys have, you know, guys and gals, I'm being maybe a little bit pejorative. But I think you have the ability here today to do something very, very great for this town in the future. I don't, I don't know how long I'll be around, I'm 66 now. But I can tell you that what I've seen at the holiday snack bar, particularly since Hurricane Sandy, has been a very, very, very good thing for this town. And I would hope that you could promote and at least accept that if they do put, are able to designate where those tables are going to go under the standards in the municipal land use law, both a positive and negative criteria being met. And I think this variance application should be granted, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Zoe Hermans. I live at 102 East 16th Street in North Beach Haven.
You soundless, swear affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes. So I've been an employee at Holiday for the past three years. Um, between my sister and I, we've been working with the bokers for seven years now. Um, I just wanted to speak to attest that I have been going to Holiday since I was like three years old. I've been living on the island in the summer. Since I was three, my family loves it there, we go every year as a family. And I just wanted to speak to attest about how much this town loves Holiday. Everyone I speaks to always says, oh my gosh, you work at Holiday. That's so much fun, like the food's great. People come in every day asking about the Lady Lord, any cake, they just are always saying that they love it. And to speak on the issue about bikes, I personally bike everywhere on the island, every restaurant I go to. And I think the bike racks at Holiday limit to on-the-sidewalk use. Many places I go to are parked in parking spots on the sidewalks. I think that Holiday limits that the most, given the two accessibilities to biking spots. So I feel like most of the traffic is also foot traffic, so I don't see bikes on sidewalks. I'm a server there, so I walk outside all day. I barely see any bikes on the sidewalk at all. So that's all I had to say.
Ryan Boker, 5404 South Long Beach Boulevard.
You soundless, swear affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do, I do, thank you for allowing me to speak. On my way to work this morning to the Holiday, I passed a local business on the boulevard and I counted 17 bicycles in the street. Just in our five-minute break, I went over to measure our tables, and I saw 16 bikes laying in a public parking lot. So I don't know how often we're addressing the bike issue, or is this just being pointed towards the holiday snack bar? And now this is a great opportunity, like the gentleman just said, to use variances to make the community better. Obviously, there's a precedent in this town with the land use port. The only example I can think of is the Crapery Place who just opened up. It was a little corner penny store 50, 60 years ago. And it was a residence for many, many years, which would disqualify from becoming a business again. But we were insightful enough to allow them to make that a business, because it was good for the town. It's a great place. But they have no parking, no bicycle racks, no easements, no, you can touch the wall. So to stick by a certain code in this instance and make the allowances all over town would be difficult to understand from a business owner's perspective like us. But it would be difficult for the 6,000 people that signed the petition that support the holiday snack bar and their movement as it stands right now. The tables are four, the round tables are four feet in diameter. There's no width and diameter, just four feet. The picnic tables are six feet wide by three feet long. No, no, six feet, they're six feet long, they're six feet long by three feet wide. And they sit seven feet from the curb. That's what we just went over there and measured. And I, and, and honestly, I want to finish up on this. When I walked outside to go to my business, there were five bicycles in the middle of the borough parking, a sidewalk. So there's bicycles everywhere. Thank you.
Wait, I object, this is.
Well, he was the one.
Wow.
Are you an expert? You want to go there and measure?
That's all right, all right. Yeah, a couple of minutes, a couple of inches won't wear the other, let's not argue.
Max Goldman, 12 Sterling Lane in Barnegat.
You soundless, swear affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, so I have been here now twice. Um, I've been here this, the last meeting joyfully. Um, tonight, we were told last meeting, you should show up with these drawings, this, that, the other thing. The fire marshal's, um, occupancy, which was brought up. Now, one of the ordinances that I want to bring up that you guys keep bringing up is lighting is 137. Lighting will be required if outdoor dining area is to be used after dusk. I mean, lighting is required, there's your string lights. Um, another thing is you guys keep bringing up the parking, the bicycles. Riding on bicycles in Beach Haven on sidewalks is prohibited. That's another ordinance, 59-1. So who cares about the bicycles on sidewalks? Another thing there we have is outdoor dining areas may be located on sidewalks, decks, patios, private lawns, contiguous with the establishment. So, I mean, even if they wanted to use a sidewalk, your ordinance says that they can. Um, finally, we have, which has been run it multiple times, the amount of seats available to patrons shall not exceed the permitted occupancy of the establishment. So that's 71, we're fighting over one seat, it sounds like. So I mean, you, using those ordinances that are in Beach Haven, it kind of seems like everything kind of is starting to be in a row. So that, that's all I have.
Anybody on Zoom? Anybody else have a comment? One more time?
Scott Bowlin, 302 in Crest Court, but now 5 East 29th Street, the township. You would ask, someone over here had asked before about, um, the suppression system, what that did to the occupancy, whether or not that took occupancy away. It doesn't take occupancy away. It sounds like all that the bouncers did was the fire official, I wish people would have did this in my town, voluntarily put the suppression system in. The fire official was happy about it, and he didn't take away any of the occupancy. If they were concerned with it was going to take away occupancy, they would have reduced the occupancy at that point. That would have been right from the fire official. The fire official just granted the same exact occupancy. So it doesn't make any sense to kind of be punishing the bouncers for conforming to the National Fire Safety Code by not granting them the seats to continue the business that they already had. So I just wanted to answer your one question, there was somebody over here, I think, that had the question about the suppression system. Thank you.
It's going to be the last public comment.
Hi, my name is Lauren Northrow. My permanent address is 612 Van Gogh Court in Monroe. However, my family and friends.
You soundless, swear affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. My family and friends have got houses all up and down this island. I've been coming here for some 50 years. I came here as a child, a young adult. I came here as a mom and as a grandmom. I brought my kids, my grandkids, my nieces and nephews here. And part of the reason why I love this island and why I love coming here is because of businesses like the holiday snack bar, because of the charm of the area. And this is a common scenario. I, I've seen it throughout many states, throughout the entire United States, where someone buys a house next to a business and then finds out that they don't like living next to that business. And then they wreak havoc on that business. Uh, it's a common scenario. It does not serve the greater good of the community. It serves the people that don't want to live next to a business. Um, walk up and down the streets here. Walk up and down this street. There's businesses with tables and chairs and no buffer right next to a house. What that's right, wrong, or different, it does exist. Um, I don't know, I think it's rather obvious that the majority of the people in this community who pay taxes are in support of the holiday snack bar. Thanks for your time.
I saw a move.
Second. Entertain a motion to approve or disapprove this. Discussion about seating or anything? Oh, okay, yeah, let's have a discussion about the seating since we've heard from the public so much, I'm sorry.
I'd like to just ask one question, I wasn't clear on James, what you said. Um, the 137 section is not the governing code for spacing between tables, what have you? Because obviously, safety, I'm sure, is their concern as much as everybody's. But what, I mean, is there a code with the safe spacing between tables and other media?
I'm not sure if there is one within the municipal ordinance, but the, the, the point was the outdoor seating ordinance applies. I think the intent was to control people that want outdoor seating that do not have site plan approval for it. And if you can't get the approval that you apply for under the outdoor seating ordinance, your recourse is to come here for the, to the land use board for site plan approval. And here, we don't have an existing site plan, and that's one of the requirements to utilize that section 137. So they would have been here regardless, and those parameters in, in section 137 don't apply if you have a site plan. The site plan is what controls.
So, I mean, that sounds like a technicality, to be honest with you.
If I may.
What controls the safety question?
They're asking for a waiver of the site plan. Affirmatively asking for a waiver of the site plan, so it's not a technicality.
We, we asked for a waiver from formal site plan detail, but we did submit a site plan.
But I'm saying, but like, I guess just, is there a, I mean, you got round tables, pretty simple. How far apart do they have to be? Is there something that you base that on?
I, I don't believe there's anything in the municipal ordinance that governs that, to my knowledge.
Frank, you got something brewing up there, I can tell.
No, I was just talking, I, like I said, I mean, originally the last approval on this was 36 seats. That the borough approved under their ordinance, whether they had a site plan or not. Whether they had a site plan or not, the last approval, official approval we have on this application was given by the borough with 36 seats.
Outside.
And last time, I, I think we mentioned, I thought we were down to 40 seats, which would allow this to spread out a little bit more. But now we're, the applicants here with a site plan requesting 48. So the board's got to decide, you know, do we want more spacing between the tables? And if we do, how many seats do you want to eliminate? Or, you know, or do you want to, you know, approve it as is or deny it as is?
And there's also, besides the site plan, the expansion of a non-conforming use application. And you had testimonies from two planners about whether or not this application met the popular demand. Sorry, sorry. Besides the site plan application, there's also an application for an expansion of a non-conforming use, which is what this is. And you had testimony from two planners. And it's up to the board to accept or reject the testimony of these experts on whether or not this application met the positive and negative criteria. And that's important, when it, particularly important when it comes to the D variances, which would be increasing the number of seats from the 36 to another number. So if you have any other questions about that, I would direct it to either Frank or either of the planners.
In either case, it does amount to 64, it's wide requirement.
So you guys have to discuss, you know, where you want to be. Seat wise. I, I think, I think every one of us feel that the total number of outside occupancy is too much for the space. Right?
Okay.
And what that number is, otherwise, I, it, I don't know if it's aesthetically, I mean, we can't put a, it's not played, pin the tail on a donkey. We have to figure out a number that's acceptable. The town came up with 36.
Well, Frank has testified that the last approval was 36.
I saw, I said 36.
And yet the conversation.
I'm sorry, this boker, we're, the board is, the board is deliberating.
That, that 36, by understanding, is a yearly license. So each year you have to go and reapply for that. So it's not an approval. We didn't approve any, any of that. Correct, so the 36 is just something that was issued as a yearly license.
And that we know is an existing number on site.
And, and Robin, I always have trouble with D variances and really the expansion of the non-conforming use. And I always felt that when you have a non-conforming use, it's, it's our obligation to try to bring it in line with the current zoning. And, and when you go the other way, it, it's, it's counterproductive, unless there's something there in the offering to counteract what's happening here. And maybe you can expand, expand on the, you know, the D variance and the expansion for the benefit of the soul.
Generally, non-conforming uses, they're protected, but they're discouraged because the municipality determined that this neighborhood would be better suited for residential uses. And it made the zone residential, and this business was there. So it's protected, and we can't get rid of it, and it's allowed to continue. But under the municipal land use law and under the borough ordinances, expansion is discouraged. And in order to, to show expansion, we talked about the special reasons, the positive and negative criteria that the applicant has to meet. So the applicant for special reasons would have to show undue hardship that, you know, if, if they were not permitted to expand their business, that they wouldn't be able to continue. And have you received testimony about that? Um, or, you know, does maintaining the status quo, is that, is that acceptable? And, and have you been satisfied as to the positive criteria that would justify expanding this non-conforming use beyond what it exists as today? That makes sense to you?
Yes, I think, for, you know, my benefit, I think for everyone's benefit, this is just not a normal variance.
Right, no, this is, this is extraordinary relief. It's not a setback, it's expanding a use that's not permitted beyond how it's been existing for a very long time.
I just wanted to say that I have the 2022 application for outdoor dining permit. And actually, what it states here is the existing layout of tables and chairs was 45. And they proposed a, a, a layout of chairs of 36. So in that application, and I understand it's a one-year application, but in that application, it went from 45 to 36.
But where did that number come from, that 45? Right.
That was, that was.
So what was approved was thirty-six.
That is correct, and it went from forty-five.
I think every one of us understands the, the business, what it provides for the community. No offense, but it's about that. Listening to the outpouring of people's hearts about how much, I mean, for crying out loud, just joking around, the only person that didn't call and say the Bokers are great people last month was the Pope. He was busy. So I think, I think that's why we're also having a difficult time deliberating this in our own minds. But, like, I keep going back to the fact that this is not just for the Bokers. Hope they win the lottery tonight, but if they do, they don't, we have to make sure that the town's protected somewhere down the road. And we have no way of going back and changing it after the fact. Once we grant it, it's granted. And that's kind of the problem. I know it sounds like a problem. But it's, but that's, that's, we can't go back and fight Town Hall after the fact, when we gave down all that.
I have a question for the board, for whoever might be able to answer this. The fire marshal has approved seventy-one occupancy for the inside, outside, the whole thing, or just the inside?
Inside total.
They look at the total square footage of the building. That includes the kitchen area and everything. So you could put seventy-one people in that building. I don't think you'll get them all around the counter. But if you spread them out through the entire square footage of the building, you get seventy-one people inside. That's not seats.
So if you hit seventy-one people in the building, there's nobody else permitted on the property.
Right, basically.
That doesn't help us figure out seats, does it?
No, it doesn't.
No.
I I just want to clarify, too, that the applicant I've discussed and has agreed to buffer to the shed. It was one of the conditions that the board was looking for. And, you know, the, the trees are mentioned as two existing evergreen trees. I know Ms. Sharkey said they may not be evergreens, but they would like to preserve those trees. So I guess in that area, they would buffer to the extent they could around those trees. I don't know how many arborvitae's, if any, they could fit in there, but they'll buffer within that area and then continue the arborvitae's to the shed.
How high is the fence in there now?
You know?
Six foot.
It is, it is six foot.
Six foot.
What do we, we had, we had
and
was six set up? Do we do six or eight?
Well, I mean, if you got the planted buffer, that's the point.
Yeah, that's the point, right, so there's no.
If you're gonna go down to a five-foot buffer, you might want to go to a foot fence, but we're requiring the full ten-foot buffer.
Yeah. And and I just want to clarify the special reasons variance criteria. The applicant has to show that purposes of the municipal land, or at least a purpose of the municipal land use law is being advanced. Mr. Brzezinski testified to that, that there's an enhancement in the general welfare as a result of the additional outdoor seating within the neighborhood. And there was overwhelming support from the public to that effect, too, that basically confirmed Mr. Brzezinski's testimony. And he also provided the negative criteria that's required as well about there being not a substantial detriment to the public good or the surrounding property owners. There is substantial buffer that's being proposed here that's being added, so the situation will improve with respect to the neighbors adjacent to them. Also, previously, they had tables all along that area that was, is now going to be buffered. So it it should be better than what's there now. And I I think there was a comment, too, with the special reasons standard, they, they don't have to show that their business would be harmed without the seating. That's, that's not part of the standard. They just have to show both the positive and negative criteria, which Mr. Brzezinski testified to. So those are the changes they're proposing. That there would also be agreeable to putting a third bike rack on there. Apparently, Mrs. Boker has told me that they could fit another one. There's a telephone pole adjacent to the bike rack that's shown there now on the easterly side of the property. And then on the other side of that telephone pole, you could fit another bike rack, so they are willing to put an additional bike rack over there now. And as I stated earlier, the things have changed with respect to outdoor seating. Everybody's adding outdoor seating. This is no different. They're just looking to modify things in accordance with the way the world's going. The state has passed legislation to help outdoor dining. It's right now. That goes through November of twenty twenty-four. There's talks of that being extended. And the, the neighborhood overwhelmingly, as I said before, was in support of this application. I understand there's the one neighbor, but the, the applicant is working with them to improve the situation. The tables are being shifted away from that direction. The bumper's increasing. The, the issue of the bikes is something that can easily be addressed. And you know, that that's that's basically the, the gist of the application. We're trying to keep the overall seating consistent with what was there previously. That was important to us. And we feel that the, the proposed plan of forty-eight outdoor seats is a good balance. It's tight inside there. I, I don't know. I'm sure everybody's eaten there at some point. It's tight, and with the way things are going, this is a better plan for the, for this building at this point. So, thank you.
I just want to say, Mr. Raven's comments should be taken just as that comments.
Can you just come to the microphone?
Mr. Raven's comment should be taken by the board just as that comments. He, it's not testimony. We don't know about any state legislation. We don't know if there's been a, a, a trend towards outdoor seating. There's been no testimony to that. There's been no evidence in support of that. This board has to make a ruling on evidence, not comments. And and all the partners are asking for is enforcement of your current ordinances. We're not asking for anything other than what already exists.
I'd like to just make a comment. Yes, we'll comment before motion. I'm totally in favor of, you know, the Holiday Snack Bar. It's been there as long as I've been here, since two thousand and four and beyond, and everyone loves it. We know that. But in fairness, I think, in my opinion, outside seating should be forty tables, inside twenty-four to thirty-six. Forty, forty seats outside. Yay, forty tables. Twenty-four to thirty-six seats inside. Extra bike rack would be great if it's possible to work it out. Eight o'clock breakfast, the buffer extended to the shed. We can work on that, discuss that. I don't know if anybody agrees or disagrees or wants a comment, but that's my thinking.
Just ask a question. On the, the one side, there's a six, a six, and a four. Why isn't that a six, six, and a six? I'm facing Delaware. Why is there a four and then two other sixes and sixes?
It wouldn't fit.
Wouldn't fit? It's the way it's drawn.
Okay.
What's that? Oh, the map.
So what you're saying is move that four top?
If you, if you could move the six to the four and then put a four in place of the six, maybe kill a six, you'd get space around the fours. People could navigate, and you're, you're swapping out, but you're not losing considerable headcount. And it, it seems that on the side where there'd be four fours.
Forty-two?
Yeah. I think that's, yeah. I mean, the, the loss of the inside seats to me seems like a self-inflicted wound. And it's great, but I think you can change some of the configuration to get to a forty-two outside, and you get more flow around the, the four tops. And the buffer and the bike racks, but you could, it would change the flow. There'd be fewer people near the people who are saying it's noisy. And there'd be more people facing the street. Now, I don't know the place. I haven't been there since I was around seven or eight years old. It was great then, but I don't know. You can't put a six there. I don't know, maybe there's a way.
Maybe.
Is there service out the west side of the building? Where the buffer is, like, when yours, when this, those servers are coming out with food?
Come out the front door.
They only come out the front.
And sometimes they go out the kitchen door. We don't hand any food out the window.
There's seventy because between the picnic table on the east side and the curb. From end of the picnic tables and the curbs are separate. So we could put the other six top.
I'm sorry, I thought public comments.
My apologies, I had a question. Somebody needs to come up with a
Come up with a proposal.
Proposal.
I'm with.
Make, make what I said a motion.
How many seats were you talking about?
Well, if there's some way to move it around and make it forty-two, okay, but I said forty outside. Just to give it more space and.
Penny, it was thirty-two inside.
Yeah, the other.
Okay, twenty-four, thirty.
I, I would, I would support any that, that number, but as I indicated earlier, if the inside capacity, which I read was like thirty or thirty-two, and they have the volume, move, move some of those outdoor seats inside then.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's arguing about the inside. If, whatever they give in the inside is not an issue.
I'm just trying to get more room outside.
It's outside is the problem.
Then I, I would support either forty-two, forty-four outside and, and just increase the number inside a little bit.
Take your motion.
All right.
I'll go back to you again, Frank. The sidewalk, though. This is our
Right.
last chance to do it, if we're gonna have continuous side.
Well, if it's in the motion, you could require it.
Okay, so you don't have it. You feel let's do it.
I mean, yeah, you can fit it in there.
I, I'd like to see that.
I'm sorry.
The sidewalk on Delaware Avenue. Which will be approved by the, you know, the township engineer.
There's a wall here. I'm listening to what's going on up here.
Can everyone please quiet down? The board is deliberating. Thank you.
So the only problem with the sidewalk is you can't move the dumpster. So if you did it on Delaware, you'd have to end it at the dumpster anyway, so.
Neighbors next door don't have.
It would continue, though.
Maybe that's something they have to figure out, how they handle it. They might need a compact, they might need some others.
Frank, what is the process for adding a sidewalk? Do they, do they have to go through the borough or?
No, if you require it, it gets put on the site plan and has to be installed.
So it's fifty-eight inches of space, which you need an eighteen-inch, right?
Well, you need.
More than that, sixty.
We also have a telephone pole in there, so you have to wrap around the telephone pole. I mean, sidewalk minimum four feet.
And then eighteen inches.
And then you've got to normally have a utility strip, and you could, you could put the sidewalk right up against the curb, but then you have to go around the telephone pole. You could do it against the curb line. In that one area.
But it's the last chance to have a side. And there's pretty much continuous, also for the adjacent property, seems to be continuing the sidewalk over. So you're forcing people out in the street for that one area. I, I know when I walked the other day, I had to cross over and then cross back, because I didn't know there was no parking, but there was cars parked.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because of the parking situation, and it's kind of.
Right. I was thinking of a lower number towards outdoor seating, but if everybody's comfortable with your numbers, I'm fine, I'm fine with that.
They're gonna have to submit a revised plan.
And it will, and it will. I think Penny has it, and there will need to be, you know, I guess we'll memorialize it at our next meeting. It has to be in so many days, but we need to see a more definitive seating plan. Right now, we still have a picture.
Right.
We don't have a definitive, because it's the site plan, that's what they have to adhere to. So we, we need that.
Well, let's, let's see what's gonna be in this motion, whether there's gonna be sidewalk in it, forty seats. You know, we already know the buffer's gone back to the shed. Once we get a motion, and if it gets approved, then I would require them to submit an updated plan prior to us reading and approving the resolution. Just so we can have everything dimensioned correctly, and the whole board sees it before you vote on the resolution. Which, again, if you approve it, would be adopted at our next meeting.
All right, so somebody needs to make that.
Make a motion or were you just suggesting? Because if you made a motion, you gotta either amend it or rescind it.
It wasn't, it was just my comment. It was just my comments. I have not made a motion.
You want me to do it, or you want to do it, Penny? Either way.
Well, you wanna, you wanna add the concrete sidewalk.
The sidewalk and
Hey, Jim.
The light, I mean, the lighting.
You agree.
The lighting along the side lot property doesn't make any sense anymore.
You agree with the sidewalk?
I, I know the board's deliberating. I just wanted to mention with sidewalk that that would inhibit the area of the bike racks there. I just wanted to point that out.
Well, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Frank, do you have anything on the sidewalk and the bike racks?
Well, I mean, again, I mean, anytime a site plan comes before you, it's an opportunity to get improvements. And sidewalk's certainly a safety improvement, and how you configure the bike racks, you have to work that out.
We'll give them latitude with the bike racks?
Sure.
Okay, so I would like to propose a motion that we extend an approval to the Holiday Snack Bar for forty outside seats, twenty-four to thirty-two inside seats, extra bike racks, if there's any way to possibly include them. Eight o'clock breakfast time, ten o'clock closure.
Nine, nine.
Nine o'clock closure, sorry. Buffer extended to the shed, and additional sidewalk added to the Delaware side of the property.
The delineation of, of the seating area, so it doesn't extend into the back.
They're gonna have to come back with a plan so that we can review it before the resolution is formally
I get it.
approved, so we can see everything dimensioned correctly, including the buffer.
Okay.
And know how the tables will be placed along with the sidewalk.
So you're adding submission of a revised site plan with accurate table sizing prior to.
Actually, voting on the final resul- memorialization of the resolution. Four foot. Yeah, just giving the minimum four.
Everything's in their site plan. They don't, they're not coming back, just to prove it.
No, I mean, I want to review the plan. I want the board to see it.
Yep.
And to make sure there's no questions before you vote on the actual resolution. I mean, you can, you have to make a motion tonight to approve or deny, but with those conditions, and then we'll make sure the plan.
Have a motion.
Okay, is there anything else about the use of the buffer?
Yeah, that's in there.
Did she say?
Extend the buffers, huh?
Extend it.
To the shed.
Extend the tree buffer to the shed.
Right.
Okay.
And the, and the, and the stones between, between the building and the buffer?
No, we don't have to, I mean, it's just a we don't want that to be a game area or anything like that.
It's supposed to be just.
Remain open.
Open.
For anything?
Yeah.
So you want to amend your what else did you have in there?
Okay.
Sidewalk. Forty seats. Buffer zone extended to the shed. No use other than, the buffer zone has to stay open. And outside dining at what time?
Eight o'clock, eight o'clock till nine.
About lighting, was that?
No lighting issue.
Well, the lighting, the lighting can go over the seating areas, but it doesn't have to be in the side yard where there's no seating. So no, so, well, that's true.
I'm sorry, comments.
You're right. There has to be, there has to be some lighting along the side of the building, because the bathrooms are in, in the rear.
I have no concern with the lighting.
Frank, what is the impact on the existing bike rack by implementing a sidewalk?
You're gonna have to adjust it. I mean, they're eliminating, if they're eliminating seating, there's room to put a bike rack where the four top is and move it closer to the building, away from the side. and move it closer to the building away from the sidewalk.
Get them latitude to provide ample bike racks.
Right.
So Frank, is that what's going on? They're eliminating seating, or is that additional seating inside?
You just heard the motion. 32 inside, up to 32 inside and 40 outside. Well, that's the motion.
That's the motion. No second?
Do we have a second?
I'll have to figure out how this is going to work.
I'll second that.
Who is that?
Let's go to vote. Mr. Metal?
Yes.
Mrs. Edels?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Tinklist?
No.
Mr. Valbo?
Yes.
Mr. Wanger?
No.
Ms. King?
Didn't get approved. So.
Yep, so the, uh, the motion fails.
No approval. So they don't get any. Well, yeah. Whatever. At this point. So I don't really know where this goes from here. It had to get, have a five.
Is there another motion or?
They cover the bills for it?
We're going to do it in August.
Can we talk amongst ourselves?
No, no, we can't.
No.
You can talk to me, you can talk to Frank. But we can't talk amongst ourselves. We'll need to make it, are there either another motion or a motion?
You can make another motion.
Yeah, I think, I, I think at this point, you had a motion. It was denied. The application's over, and if they want a new application, they're going to have to come back with another application. Unfortunately, that's how it works.
I make a motion to adjourn. Got a second?
Second.
Second.